Councilor Gardner, may I ask you to lead us in the singing of the National Anthem?
Oh Canada, our own native land. True patriot's love in all of us command. Cao do gha se pothir thir thir, il se pothir a quan. Tony swaite un epope, de flugli ar sex blom. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
That was beautiful, Councilor Gardner. And it's our last council meeting before Canada Day, so that was a beautiful rendition and wishing everyone a good Canada Day. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akwesasne. National Indigenous Peoples' Day was yesterday, and it is Indigenous History Month every June, so we can bear that in mind. I'd like to just say a message or give a message to residents. I want to thank them for their patience throughout this COVID-19 situation. I watched, and I don't usually watch council meetings, I don't re-watch them. I did re-watch a little bit of the last one because we've been getting lots of compliments on the sound and the images. So we're glad that residents are able to watch and get a good picture. But when I watched it, I did notice, you know, the gray hair and the roots and the tiredness. And I had a few text messages from people saying, "You look tired and you looked mad." I don't know about the mad part, but the tired part for sure. And I know that it's been difficult for many residents, for all of us in different ways throughout this. And I just want to say that it's been impressive to watch residents follow the rules, try to figure out the rules, try to keep up with everything, try to pivot and change and adapt and be patient. Alors, je veux juste remercier les gens pour leur patience pendant cette période de temps très difficile. We know that you're doing your best and we appreciate that. Madam Clerk, roll call. Mayor Bernard Decleymard.
Present.
Councilors Claude McIntosh, Sid Gardner, Dean Hollingsworth, Caroline Ebbay, Councilors Maurice Dupell.
Present.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Andy Lane McDonald.
Present.
Oh, Councilor Bergeron on the phone. Oh, Councilor Bergeron.
I am also present.
Merci. Madam Clerk, additions? I have none, Madam Mayor. Any additions, deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilor Bergeron, go ahead.
I'd like to move item 14.2 Economic Development Report to Reports.
Of that, Madam Clerk? Any other additions? Yes. Councilor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I'd like to withdraw my motion to discuss the open-air fire bylaw. I think it needs some more work, and I think it wouldn't be fair to throw all those changes out on the table tonight. I think the public and the council needs some more time to review.
So I think that we'll review that once the resolution comes up on the agenda. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? That's correct, Madam Mayor. So I'll ask you to repeat all of those words once we get to the resolution. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Bennett. Need a motion to adopt the agenda? Councilor Ebbay, Councilor Grant, any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
Any disclosure of interest? Need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole? Councilor Gardner, Councilor McIntosh, all in favor?
In favor.
Adoption of minutes? Minutes for the meeting of June 8, 2020. Moved by? Councilor McDonald seconded by? Councilor Dupell, any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, presentations.
Our first presentation is the Brookdale Avenue North Cost Recovery Update and D.C. Background Study, and we have here Watson as a Washington economist to present.
Hello. Welcome to Cornwall City Council. You need the mic, yes.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so thank you very much. So the intent of the presentation today is to update council on the approach and proposed changes to the cost recovery for extending municipal wastewater services to the Brookdale Avenue North corridor. So just by way of review on some of the background related to this project, the costs were, for this sewer extension, were initially identified in the city's 2017 Development Charge Background Study and then subsequently included in the area-specific bylaw that was passed in 2018, Bylaw 201837. And within that 2017 Development Charge Background Study, the approach to recovering the costs of service was established through development charges under the Development Charges Act as well as Municipal Act capital charges under the authority of the Municipal Act. The, since that time when the 2017 study was prepared, the project has subsequently been awarded, and in the award of that project, there have been cost increases that have been in excess of inflationary increases over that time and as well in part due to geotechnical conditions that have been encountered through the design of this project. Some other changes that we'll discuss through this presentation necessitating the update to the area-specific development charge and Municipal Act capital charge calculations are changes to the benefiting service area as well as changes to the anticipated development within the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor benefiting area. So to review the process to date in the study, council was updated on the project and cost estimates in November of last year before the project was awarded in February earlier this year. Drafts Municipal Act and Development Charge recommendations and calculations were then presented to council on May 25th before a presentation to the benefiting property owners last week related to the development charge and Municipal Act capital charge calculations, leading us to this presentation of the final recommendations today. With regard to the next steps and the remaining process within the study's schedule, we'll discuss those at the conclusion of this presentation. So to touch briefly on the two legislative authorities for the recovery of these costs. Under the Development Charges Act, the development charges provides for the recovery of gross-related capital costs related to new development. There are some limitations on services that can be included within development charge recovery.
Councilor Grant, did you have a question?
Yes, it's on the next point. DCs are generally payable at the time of the building permit issue. What does that mean? Generally?
Can you address that?
Yeah, I can. So that will be addressed in the course of this presentation, the development charge bylaw implementation rules. So I will get to that, and possibly if I haven't sufficiently addressed your question, please let me know. I'm happy to provide further clarification.
That's fair, thank you.
So wastewater services are an eligible service under the Development Charges Act authority. And the default mechanism under the Development Charges Act is that development charges would be payable at the time of building permit issuance. However, there are other provisions within the act and recently passed regulations that I'll touch on in some further slides around some changes to the timing of the calculation and payment of development charges for certain types of developments. Because development charges are triggered at building permit issuance, development charges are not a suitable mechanism to recover the costs of service from existing private service developments. So home or properties that are currently serviced by private wastewater services would not trigger the payment of a development charge when they connect to the new wastewater extension. With regard to the Municipal Act, capital charges are imposed under Section 391 of Part 12 of the Municipal Act. And municipalities generally use capital charges to recover those costs of service from private service users and for capital improvements from existing developments, as I was just referring to. What's important within Section 391 is that the act also permits the imposition of charges and the recovery of costs from individuals who receive either an immediate or deferred benefit of service. So the benefiting service area that's been assessed in this Cost Recovery Update include the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor, including within that properties that have existing development currently on those properties as well as vacant properties that are anticipated to develop over the forecast period. And one of the changes in this update compared to the 2017 D.C. Background Study is that development is anticipated to occur at a slightly higher density than it was at that time, at about 18.5% lot coverage compared to a 15% lot coverage assumption that was utilized in the 2017 Background Study. Within that benefiting service area for which these services have been designed for, there's also areas outside of the current urban settlement boundary, including lands along Tollgate Road West as well as additional lands outside of the urban settlement boundary. So looking at the total capital cost of this project and the associated funding mechanisms, the total costs have been identified as $10.7 million, inclusive of net HST payable by the city as well as just under $1 million for the provision of increased capacity for the servicing of those lands along Tollgate Road West. After firstly deducting about that $900,000 for the servicing capacity for Tollgate Road West as well as a $2.1 million related to the servicing of other lands outside the urban settlement boundary, there's about $3 million in costs that will be interim financed by the city but could potentially be included in future development charges or Municipal Act capital charge recoveries at a later date once that urban, once those lands are included within the urban settlement boundary. Looking at the remaining $7.7 million in costs, based on the peak sanitary flows and the design of the system, about $3 million have been allocated to properties with existing development while $4.7 million have been allocated to vacant properties for which an area-specific development charge would be imposed under the authority of the Development Charges Act. So the costs that have been included in the development charge calculations firstly include not only the $4.7 million share of the capital cost but as well as an additional $1.6 million in net financing costs as are allowable under the Development Charges Act. After deducting about $300,000 for a development charge revenue already received towards these costs, $6 million has been included in the calculation of the charge. The lands for which this charge is applicable to total about 101.6 acres, for which there will be an anticipated development of about 723,000 square feet of gross floor area development. The development charge calculation has been done so on a uniform basis across those lands, resulting in a charge per square foot of gross floor area of $7.27, compared to the existing charge within the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor for wastewater services of $6.80. That would represent about a 7% increase or compared to the total charge payable, including the citywide development charge, just under a 5% increase. For the Municipal Act capital charge, as I mentioned, these charges have been prepared based on the peak sanitary flows for each of the properties. And a point of note, the property names listed here are those that were utilized in the 2017 D.C. study, although some of the property owners may have changed, the names have remained the same for consistency. Those charges range between about $126,000 on the low end up to just over $1 million on the high end. So looking at the implementation policies for the development charge and Municipal Act charges, firstly looking at the development charges. So as I mentioned, they will be imposed as they are currently through the imposition of an area-specific development charge bylaw, and that development charges are calculated and payable on the date of the first building permit. However, the city, as any municipality does under Section 27 of the Development Charges Act, they have the ability to enter into agreements with applicants to allow for the payment of development charges either before or after the otherwise would be payable, and that can be done on a case-by-case basis. And then within the development charge bylaw, the policy would be continued to allow for mandatory annual indexing of the charge on January 1st of each year. Further to the calculation and timing of development charges, subsequent to the Royal Assent of Bill 108 in June of last year, the province did issue OREG 55419 at the end of last year, which did bring into effect some of the changes that were proposed through Bill 108. And one of those was mandatory deferred payments for certain types of developments. And so those that pertain to non-residential development, being the only development allowed in the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor, institutional developments are allowed a mandatory deferral of their development charges and six equal annual installments starting on the date of occupancy. And then as well, also passed through OREG 45419 late last year for development charges that proceed through either the site plan or zoning bylaw amendment application processes under the Planning Act. Those charges will be calculated at the time that planning application is made, but they won't be actually payable until the time of building permit issuance. And so slightly different to the default provisions of the act where those charges are calculated at the time of building permit issuance. Those charges will continue to be frozen at that earlier calculated rate for a maximum period of two years after the approval of that planning application. What the act also allows is that municipalities can charge interest on those mandatory deferred payments or for the charges that are frozen at an earlier point in time. And included within the draft development charge bylaw for the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor is that that rate would be a rate of prime plus 3%. The statutory development charge exemptions that pertain to non-residential development include for existing industrial development, they may expand up to 50% of their current gross floor area without the payment of development charges, and the expansion beyond 50% would be liable to pay development charges. And then development charges are not payable by lower or upper-tier municipal governments or boards of education. Councils are also allowed to impose non-statutory development charge exemptions as defined in their development charge bylaws. It's proposed that the current exemptions would continue to be imposed, being bona fide farm uses, places of worship, hospitals governed by the Public Hospitals Act, college/university buildings, manufacturing uses, and then any properties that have paid a charge imposed under the Municipal Act, being the Municipal Act capital charge for the wastewater extension would also be exempt from the payment of development charges as they would have fully paid for the capacity, of the wastewater capacity at their property. With the Municipal Act capital charge policy, there's a fair bit of flexibility in terms of how that charge is calculated and imposed. The, but what is currently being proposed is that that capital charge will be based on the actual cost and will be imposed at the time those wastewater services are available. The proposed payment options that are being considered at this time are an installment charge where the property owner could pay their capital charge in annual installments. Typically, that installment period would mirror the debt term issued by the city for that project or a commuted charge where the landowner within a certain period of time could apply to pay the charge in full. To the extent any properties have paid, who are, any properties who are subject to the Municipal Act capital charge have paid an area-specific D.C. in advance of the Municipal Act capital charge being imposed, any development charge paid would be credited against the Municipal Act capital charge, that there would be no double cost recovery. So in terms of the next steps, the schedule that you've seen presented by city staff throughout this process is identified here that you're familiar with. And so proceeding from where we are today, the presentation of the final recommendations, the Development Charge Background Study is to be issued publicly on the city's website tomorrow as required at least 60 days in advance of bylaw passage according to the Development Charges Act. There'll then be a notice of public meeting in newspaper as required by the act, at least 20 clear days prior to a statutory public meeting of council on the matter, which is proposed currently for July 27th before the bylaw and study being brought forward to council for approval and adoption on September 14th of this year. Subsequent to that, there's then Subsequent to that, there's then requirements of the city to give notice of bylaw passage, including the last date of appeal, and making a pant foot available as required by the Act. Once the project is also complete, the city would then proceed to prepare a municipal act capital charge bylaw for approval by council and imposition on the currently developed properties within the benefiting service area. So, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a minor question, but on page 26 in my book, I don't know what the slide was numbered, there's an indication that the bylaw provides that interest will be calculated based on a rate of prime plus 3%. Is that discretionary, or is that fixed?
That is discretionary. So, the Act allows municipalities to charge interest on the deferred payments or the charges that are frozen in advance, but it does not require that municipalities charge interest, nor does it set what the interest rate is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Bergeron?
No questions.
That must mean that that was very clear, sir. Oh, Counselor Mack? Okay, go ahead.
When we talk about the last day for bylaw appeal, first, whom appeals, and to whom do they appeal?
So, anyone may appeal a development charge bylaw, and they have the appeal rights last for 40 days after the date of bylaw passage, and they appeal that bylaw to the local planning appeal tribunal.
Anybody who is a resident or a property owner of the city can appeal?
Anybody.
Anybody?
Anybody at all.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentations. Very technical. It is also part of a long history around this file. It's good to see it moving forward. There's been a lot of work and a lot of buy-in from businesses that have been very, very patient throughout this process, and so, this is us marching forward with your assistance, sir, and so, we appreciate the report, and we'll continue to move forward with this project, which will definitely benefit the city overall, but, you know, particularly bringing in that north end of town into a proper service situation. So, thank you very much for presenting to our council.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Our second presentation is a social housing providers and of operating agreement mortgages, and we have Melissa Morgan, acting director here this evening to present.
Don't rush, it's okay. We don't want you falling down the stairs there. May I ask you to make sure your chairs are properly distanced? Thank you. Yes? I'm going to ask Ms. Morgan to introduce.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
Ms. Morgan, would you slide over to your right, please?
That's not quite the distance, the proper distance. Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. My name is Melissa Morgan. I am the acting administrator for the Social and Housing Services Department, and with me here this evening is Natasha Hess, financial analyst for the Social and Housing Services Department as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
So, Natasha and I are here this evening to present a brief summary of the end-of-operating and mortgage agreements, which are a part of a report in your agenda package this evening. By way of a brief history, between 1964 and 2000, social housing was actually delivered and administered by the province of Ontario. In 2000, between 2000 and 2002, social housing was devolved to 47 service managers, and at the point of transfer, operating agreements were also transferred to the service manager as well. The operating period was typically the term of the mortgage of that particular building. The service manager is responsible for end-of-operating agreements and mortgages, including negotiating new funding agreements post EOA as part of devolution. Part of our preliminary review that we have conducted suggests that the end-of-operating agreements will be unique and varied in every situation, based on its original funding formula at devolution. It's anticipated that some projects might not be financially viable without considerable municipal support, while others are intended or anticipated to be self-sufficient after end of operating. There are four main issues at the center of this matter that we concentrated on throughout our entire process, and they are the best method of determining funding for a transferred housing program after the mortgage has been fully amortized, what are the financial impacts of these methods, what are the impacts to the service manager if we do not renew agreements, and what are the impacts to the provider if we don't renew agreements?
We have three types of operating agreements. All three must follow the rules and regulations in the Housing Services Act, and they must follow the service manager local rules and directives. The service manager is the city of Cornwall. We have a local housing corporation, which is also referred to the LHC, which you may know them better as the Cornwall Area Housing Corporation. They are our largest provider, and the city, and, sorry, they are our largest provider, and the city of Cornwall is the sole shareholder. And we also have a Section 95 agreements and provincial reform agreements, which also includes a cooperative housing portfolio. For provincial reform and Section 95 providers, when a mortgage is fully amortized, the operating agreements expired. It is also referred to as end-of-operating agreement, EOA, or end-of-mortgage, EOM. All of our operating agreements will expire by January 2029. The first provincial reform agreement will expire April 2022, and the first Section 95 agreement expired April 2020. As service manager, we must maintain service level standards post EOA and EOM. That means we must continue to have 1,843 RGI units. An RGI unit is a rent geared-to-income unit, where a tenant pays 30% of their income as rent. At EOA, Section 95 providers are no longer required to provide RGI units. At EOM, provincial reform providers are only required to maintain a minimum of 25% of their units as RGI.
As service manager, we have obligations that were mandated to us at devolution, and most recently, these are under the Housing Services Act, and it states that a service manager has an overriding obligation to administer and fund a transferred housing program as it relates to a housing project designated in these regulations. And it goes on to say that we must continue to provide affordable housing. In September of 2019, as part of our, as part of the community housing renewal strategy, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing paused the practice of removing housing projects from the Housing Services Act, because at the time of the end-of-operating agreement, some providers can, with the agreement of the service provider, the service manager, opt out of social housing. Part of our obligation is to maintain service level standards, and Natasha previously touched on this, that we are mandated to maintain 1,843 units. These service level standards are legislated, the legislated minimum number of rent geared-to-income units that service managers must maintain even after the end-of-operating agreements, as prescribed in the Housing Services Act. At post EOA, post-end-of-mortgage, there's a, oh, no, that one's fixed, provincial reform providers must maintain a minimum of 25% of their RGI units. So, these providers must enter into an agreement with us, post EOM, as it stands now. So, as an example, if we were to only enter into 25% of the units post EOM, that we would only have 137 units of 480, and we would be left to find 343 units via other avenues. And our preliminary data from our ongoing housing revitalization study shows that there's a need for more affordable housing units within the city of Cornwall and SDNG, outside of our social housing provider units.
As Melissa mentioned previously, when we reviewed the funding, the different funding models, we took the following into consideration: what would be the most financially responsible options for the city and the housing providers? What is the most viable and successful funding model? What's the best way to provide safe, energy-efficient, and well-maintained units? How to meet the corporation's strategic priorities of providing quality affordable housing, and how to increase reserve fund contributions to meet future needs and demands of social housing? Municipal contributions include city of Cornwall and the United Counties of SDNG. Method one, as you can see from the chart, is the most financially beneficial to city and county taxpayers. We took the existing provincial reform funding formula for all providers, excluding the local housing corporation, with no mortgage payments, because all mortgages are paid in full. This method will assist the service manager in meeting service level standards. The providers operate within existing local rules, which allows for building condition assessments and monitoring the condition of the units and the building. This is the only method where providers can qualify for federal and provincial funding for capital repairs. From the last 10 years, our providers have benefited from over $9.5 million for capital reserves, for capital repairs, sorry. Providers get to keep 50% of their operating surplus, and the other 50% is contributed to the social housing reserve fund. The social housing providers can access this fund through a business case, which is then approved by council. Method two and four are very similar. They both have rent supplement agreements with our current housing providers. Method two, we use an alternate average market rent to calculate the rents. An average market rent is approved by the ministry. Method four, we use the housing provider's actual market rents to calculate the rents. Both methods will assist the service manager in meeting service level standards. Rent supplement agreements are not required to operate within existing local rules, which means we can't monitor the conditions of the building or the units. Providers are no longer eligible for federal or provincial funding for capital repairs, and providers get to keep 100% of their operating surplus, and they do not contribute to the capital reserve fund. Method three, following Melissa's example on the previous slide, this is the worst-case scenario. If Section 95 providers end their operating agreements with service manager, and the provincial reform providers only maintain the minimum number of RGI units, which is 25% of their total units, using a rent supplement funding formula, we would require additional units from the private market to meet service level standards, which would be a challenge to meet the service level standards. With rent supplement agreements, landlords are not required to operate within existing local rules, which again, means we cannot monitor the condition of the building or the units. Providers are no longer eligible for federal and provincial funding for capital repairs. Providers get to keep 100% of their operating surplus, and they do not contribute to the social housing reserve fund.
In the report later on this evening, we're recommending that council approve administration proceeding with the renewing of operating agreements as they expire, using funding formula outlined in method one of the report, as Natasha briefly mentioned. In doing so, we would secure and maintain maximum RGI targets possible, as indicated the service manager is mandated to meet service level standards in the Housing Services Act. We utilize the current provincial reform funding model, excluding mortgage subsidies, to subsidize these providers, which is a more consistent application. The municipal contribution is currently reflected in the Social and Housing Services annual budget submission. It would require providers to operate within existing rules, which allows for building condition monitoring and enforcement of local rules by the service manager. It assists providers in remaining viable. It allows providers to continue to benefit from capital reserves and any new provincial or federal funding for capital repairs when available. And it would assist Section 95 providers converting to a provincial funding reform model, to keep 50% of their surplus and contribute 50% to reserves, which they currently don't do. In terms of strategic priorities, these are both in line with the corporate strategic priority and our current five-year housing plan. And by way of next steps, administration has provided, the report reflects specific details and recommendations regarding the end-of-operating agreements, mortgages, and debentures. A list of agreements and their expiry dates can be found in Appendix D of the report. Administration will also be providing a report at a subsequent joint liaison meeting for comments. Administration will also be bringing a report to council following the joint liaison meeting, seeking direction from council as it relates to each new operating agreement with providers as they expire. Unfortunately, due to recent events with COVID, we were going to be presenting to council, probably at this meeting, the housing revitalization study report, but that has been delayed till September, given recent events. And there will be future, additional future recommendations for social and affordable housing needs at that time.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Gardner?
I read the report, and in the report, it showed a lot of, it looked like you were quite, quite a shortage of housing, affordable housing in Cornwall. Is that correct?
That is the way that the preliminary data of our housing revitalization study is what it is showing right now. So, if we were to lose 343 units from our existing social housing stock, that would be 343 units we'd need to find in an already tight housing market.
And I asked the question because it wasn't too long ago, we talked about the Municipal Affairs Minister was looking at this area to help us out with some funding, so I'm just wondering if that's come forward.
There are a number of funding formulas and allocations that a service manager can apply for, depending on what point in a build that, or a repurposing of a building they might be at. We have already, through the budget process, created a new reserve fund for new affordable housing, and the housing revitalization study that we are currently conducting will provide future needs as well. In most of those cases, you have to be shovel-ready for those projects to receive those funds, and we're not shovel-ready at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I understand then that this report was simply to result in, we received the report, and you're not looking for a motion that we accept the recommendation to go with method one?
Madam Clerk, I think that's later on in the agenda.
If we're looking for that, I'd be happy to make the recommendation.
You want to do that now, because there is another spot on the agenda for that?
Oh, it's later?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
That's fine. Counselor Yabai?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I just want to ask Ms. Morgan if she can remind us about the status of our current waitlist for social housing units.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Currently, our social housing waitlist is approaching the high 600 number.
Okay, great. So, I'd certainly be supportive of the first method, which would save those 300 units, because we're already struggling to support those in need right now. So, looking forward to voting on that later. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So I just, I just want to be clear. It's very, it's a very complicated report and it's a very complicated issue. So we have to provide 1,800, 1,843 rent geared-to-income units. The law says that. Is that the absolute minimum?
That's the, yes, that, well, that is the minimum.
Okay.
Um, the province does allow for variance above and below that, uh, depending on what the demographic of the social housing tenants are because a tenant can go in as a rent geared-to-income tenant and then be gainfully employed after that and become a market tenant. And so that number does fluctuate, but that is our target number that the ministry would like us to work within.
And we meet that target?
Presently, we don't meet that target.
We don't meet that by that number you just said, six?
Uh, no.
What's the number?
We don't meet the target because the number of units that we have, the rent geared-to-income units that we have now, um, as I had indicated, some of those units are occupied by individuals who have started jobs and they are now considered market tenants. So we lose the status of an RGI unit, but they are still in a subsidized unit to certain extent.
Right.
The waitlist, in terms of the waitlist, that would be approximately 675 individuals waiting to get eligible to be in social housing and waiting to get into a unit. So conceivably, we would be short that many units.
That many. So 1,843 minus those, that number?
No, that would be an additional 600 and if we wanted to house everybody today, we'd need an additional 675 units.
Okay. So the end of these operating agreements means that we could potentially lose 300-some units?
Correct. That's correct.
And the solutions are?
Uh, at this point, it would be to renegotiate with existing providers for the same number of RGI units that they were required to provide post-end of operating agreement so that we don't lose those. And that would be method one that we're recommending this evening.
Okay. And of course, construction as well? If we could?
So our, yeah, so that is.
Have developers build, somebody build?
Absolutely. Any, all methods or all avenues could definitely be explored and that will definitely, um, those recommendations will definitely come forward in that housing revitalization study. The different opportunities we have even to regenerate current housing stock.
Right.
To either sell, rebuild, or add additions to.
And that one is the one that's coming in September?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Just one quick question. If we said as a municipality, we want to build X number of units, we're going to build 100 units, is there senior levels of funding potentially available for that kind of thing? Or are we doing it by ourselves?
So through you, Madam Mayor, the cost of construction to build it, we could definitely apply to funding. The National Housing Strategy and Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation has a number of initiatives and funding allocations we could apply for, uh, to help assist in the cost of the development so it will ultimately lower the cost of operating the building and thereby allowing perhaps more, um, RGI rents or RGI, um, units to be in those buildings.
Uh, one other question.
Go ahead.
Uh, and I'm not sure who I want to direct this to, Your Worship. Perhaps we'll start with the CIO. The old, uh, like, if you look at downtown, um, the old Cornwallis site, only a few of us still remember it, um, who owns that particular chunk? Do we still own that across this, well, I'd say from the Capitol, but that's gone too. I'm kind of running out of reference points here, but, uh, do we still own that?
Madam CIO is looking at Mr. Buallo, Mr. Buallo's looking at Madam CIO. Mr. Buallo?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. It is privately owned. Uh, so we own the parking lots that are entirely surrounding, uh, what was the Cornwallis site. But the Cornwallis site is, uh, or the former Cornwallis site, which I am familiar with to some extent.
A couple of us remember it, yes.
Uh, it is privately owned.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Madam CIO.
Any other questions from council? Um, I just want to, I'll just check with Counsel Bergeron first.
Okay.
Counsel Bergeron?
No questions, thank you.
Counsel McDonald?
I, I just think it might be interesting for people to know that if there are 600 people on the waitlist, as Ms. Morgan says, what's the time limit? How many years does it take for, um, number 600 to get a home?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, unfortunately, that's a moving target because it really depends on the type of units you're looking for. So the broader your selection is, the less time you will wait. But if an individual selects one building, one particular building, they could be on the waitlist for 10 years for that one building. Uh, whereas somebody who might be a victim of domestic violence or human trafficking could be in within three to six months. You're welcome.
No further questions? Thank you, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Hess, for your presentation. And we look forward to the follow-up in September, post-COVID-19, we hope. Madam Clerk?
We have one consent report, elected officials' expense statement for the period of April 1st to May 31st, 2020, with a recommendation that council receive this statement for this period.
Moved by Counsel DePell, seconded by Counsel Grant. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried.
Favorit.
Thank you.
We have a resolution moved by Councilors Hollingsworth and Bergeron. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Cornwall enter into discussions with the Board of Beyond 21 with the objective to create a memorandum of understanding between the city and Beyond, Beyond 21. And now therefore be it further resolved, the administration report the results of these discussions prior to budget deliberations of 2021.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, about, what, approximately six weeks ago or thereabouts, maybe a month ago, we had Beyond 21 make a presentation for some funding with the capital kind of overturn. And one of the things that came to mind or seemed to be articulated was that they rely a great deal on fundraising to generate their kind of revenue stream that they do have kind of, if I can remember correctly, uh, there is a certain amount of fees that they charge, but the real bulk of their funding, uh, comes from fundraising. And, uh, I remember hearing, I believe, the majority of council endorsed the program that they offer, the fact that they provide a particular services to particular residents and that it was good for the community. So it came to mind that, uh, fundraising for anybody who's ever done it will tell you it's a never-ending kind of uphill thing. You know, there's a lot of groups out there that need money, they have good causes, and so it becomes a real struggle. And it seemed to me that it would be a shame to see this particular organization that provides, uh, a service that we all have said is a good service, to have to really grind their way along or potentially mitigate the services they provide because of a bad funding year. COVID-19 admit is kind of a one-in-a-hundred-year sort of pandemic, but fundraising ebbs and flows, anybody that's, like I said, united way, it's, it's ongoing. So I thought, and I, I want to emphasize, Your Worship, this is coming from me, that I didn't get a call from Beyond 21 saying, will you do this on our behalf? It's kind of something that I thought was worthwhile. I talked to a, a member of the board and asked if she thought that the board would be interested in us having discussions with them vis-à-vis an MOU. They expressed that they would certainly be willing to sit down and talk with us. Um, so I thought that perhaps we could engage in discussions with them. Um, and if we're looking at a reference point, we have, if I'm not mistaken, and perhaps Ms. Bailey can kind of confirm, we have an MOU with Altsville Theater or had, I know it's coming to the end, but the idea is they provide a service, we simply offer some funding for them to provide that service rather than try to take it on ourselves. And so my feeling was Beyond 21 offers a service rather than us ever attempting to do it. Why not contact them and see if we could work some kind of an MOU so that their funding or at least part of their funding would be consistent from one year to the next? And I guess in terms of a vision or a visualization, I kind of see it as a three- or four-year term. We review at the end of those four years to say, is it working or is it not working? Do we need to tweak it? And then we kind of move forward from there. Uh, the key part is, if you'll notice, the motion says discussions, it's not nailing us down to anything. And maybe after some preliminary discussions, both parties would agree that it may not work out such as the way these things go. The last thing I wanted to emphasize, Your Worship, is I asked for it to be kind of a, some kind of a, a report or some kind of information back to council prior to budget because if those discussions were to bear some fruit and it looked like we could get to an agreement, I, at least as one member, would like to see us potentially have to deal with that, like have it in our budget as of 2021 rather than trying to do it after the fact. Now, I don't know how feasible that is. Perhaps it's not something that's doable, but that's a target I guess would be nice to achieve if we could. So I hope my colleagues will support the motion. I'd love to see some discussion. Hopefully, it'll kind of come to fruition.
Did you have a question for Madam CFO?
Uh, no, I think I'll just let the rest of my colleagues say what they feel they need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mack?
I will be voting against this and, uh, it's getting into a touchy area here when you get into, uh, groups like Beyond 21. Um, true, when we, we've just given them $100,000 for their capital project and, uh, we all support their efforts, but I think we're going down a slippery slope here. If, uh, we select one group, that's a great group, uh, I can come up with a list, Big Brothers, Gap A Center, Children's Treatment Center, Boys and Girls Club, Baldwin House, I can go down a long list of, they do tremendous work in the community and I think we're getting into dangerous territory if we select one group and we say, you know what, we just might be able to fund them every year. Uh, all these groups I mentioned, I just, there's probably many others, they all depend upon fundraising too and they all serve the community. And I don't think we should be signaling out one group and, uh, running with it. Great organization, they do tremendous work. And, uh, they also, I believe, uh, there is a small percentage of clients who do come from the counties, South Lynn Gary, South Darmon. So, uh, I think if we were going into any agreement, they would have to include those two organizations, those two municipalities, but I'll vote against that strictly in the fact that, uh, there are many other groups too that also need it and I could bring in a list and say, let's, uh, sit down and negotiate with these groups too. Why would they turn down, you know, memorandum of agreement, uh, understanding rather, uh, if we're going to offer them the money? But, uh, I just think we should be very careful when we start this.
Counsel Iber and then Counsel DePell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are very similar to Counsel McIntosh. I'm not opposed to having a conversation, but if that's the case, then we should put together some sort of process. Because if we offer this to Beyond 21, other agencies will come. I could sit here right now and name at least 45, uh, Cornwall-based nonprofits that need the funding, the, the consistent annual or quarterly funding, um, that Beyond 21 needs. Uh, they're all struggling. Uh, no one is meeting their fundraising targets, um, or if they do, it's, you know, the unicorn. Um, it's very rare. Um, and if they do meet the fundraising targets, they likely need more, uh, than what their targets are to provide the, the operations and the services that they, they're, um, trying to, to give our community. Everyone is operating on a shoestring budget right now, every nonprofit. Um, nonprofits are often judged for having overhead, for having staff, for, you know, paying bills. And so they, the community seems to think that nonprofits can rely solely on volunteers and volunteers are the heart of our community and certainly make a huge difference, but they need, um, all of these, you know, these, these staff and these expenses to, to operate. And so if we offer it to one, we're going to have to, uh, put together some kind of policies and procedures for every other agency coming in, um, asking for the same thing, especially with COVID-19 right now. Agencies are struggling more than ever. No one can fundraise or if they can, it's quite complicated too and the money coming in is, is quite restricted. Those who generally donate on a regular basis may be struggling because of a job loss. They might not be giving. Businesses who sponsor, uh, these agencies, uh, are struggling as well, so they're not sponsoring these, um, nonprofits. So I'm not opposed to this conversation so long as it comes with, uh, a procedure and a, and an annual budget for anyone else who comes down, uh, because they are all in need right now. Always, not just right now.
Counsel DePell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And like my colleagues have already spoken, I, I agree. I mean, I have, I'm not opposed to, uh, having a conversation, but I'm certainly will not vote against this motion. The only way I would vote for this motion is if there was a process in place and a window of opportunity given to all nonprofit groups out there who wanted to, uh, submit a request. Uh, but we already struggle when it comes to the outside agencies and we battle around the table for $5,000 going to a nonprofit group. So I can't see where we would be able to fund this and, uh, until I would see an actual process in place and a, a fair and equitable opportunity given to all nonprofit groups who are all suffering from a lack of fundraising on a, on a yearly basis, this year even worse. Um, I can't support the motion before us.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, I, I too can't support this motion much as I support the organization as we all do. You know, um, we haven't heard the name Dennis Carr mentioned here for a long time. Well, I just want to say, I, when I was reading this, I could hear him say, what business are we in? I think we'd have to fundamentally rethink our relationship with all our current obligations, with our mandate, and even with the provincial government. So I think if somebody really wants to help Beyond 21 get off the ground, well, first you can make them one of your regular beneficiaries from your own personal stash or whatever, but you can also lobby the provincial government because this is a create, crisis that's basically created because at some point the province cuts the clients of Beyond 21 off and, uh, it's not as though their needs have been satisfied, the needs are still there. So, um, I mean, we gave them a capital, um, in, in grant to help them build, but as far as ongoing support, you're right. We have so many charities in this city and some come to us. This is us going to them? My gosh, we could have administration busy for the next six months finding, and it's not just charities that would obviously love to have this conversation with us. I think businesses would too. I think anybody who needs help or could use help would appreciate us offering them whatever, but I just don't think it's our place. This isn't what we do and I think that, uh, it would be overturning, uh, gosh, at least 100 years of precedent for us to enter into an agreement like this on these terms. No, I think, and we have a process, as Counsel DePell said, we have the outside agencies and in fact, Beyond 21 has been there and they've asked for money there. So have many of the other charities that Counsel McIntosh mentioned and Counsel Iber. That's the process we have.
Counsel Gardner?
I'll be very brief. I agree with Counsel McIntosh, but more than that, having raised funds for other groups before, when money comes in free, uh, it's not free, it's taxpayers' money, it takes away the incentive for people to go out and raise funds. That's one of the issues that, that I had to deal with in the past. So, yeah, I, I cannot, uh, support this at all.
Counsel Bergeron?
Madam Mayor? Yes? So I, I support the motion and, uh, I was happy to second it. Uh, I look at it as, look, this is, uh, something we would discuss at budget time. Uh, I, I'm happy to discuss it at budget time. I can think of quite a few services that we as a city offer that I would consider this more important. And so at the end of the day, I, I support the motion because it would be discussed at budget. Uh, I realize other people may want to participate in that conversation. I don't think this motion, um, makes that so that they cannot. Uh, as it relates to this motion, I support it.
So before having Counsel Hollingsworth wrap up, I will, uh, comment. I agree with my colleagues, particularly the comments of, uh, Counsel Iber. I think that this is a good conversation to have. We all. We all, we all love Beyond 21. You heard us speak, all of us unanimously, when we granted them capital funds, and we were happy to do that. This is an agency that I, that was the first, one of the first agencies that I visited after becoming mayor, and, and they have certainly inspired my view of these agencies that really do the heavy lifting in our community in terms of community development. However, we did struggle to put a grants policy in place. The committee did a lot of work towards that, because it was such a struggle every time we had to do our budget and say, okay, who do we give money to? It just felt like it wasn't a fair process. So we struggled to do the municipal grants process policy over, and that was a good thing. You know, it would be interesting to have a conversation about a process around this type of thing, but we don't have one at this point. And so this falls outside of that, and so I'm going to agree with all of my colleagues in terms of not being able to support this at this time, within this context. Counselor Hollingsworth.
A couple of things I want to say to sum up. It looks like I'm going to get defeated, but I'm not going to kind of go down swinging here.
Of course.
Couple of points that are noteworthy. First of all, an MOU is not a grant. It's a memorandum of understanding, which is in essence, a contractual agreement with an outside agency to provide a service. So it's not as though at every budget, we would have to sit and debate whether we're giving them money or not. We would simply talk to them, work out some kind of contractual agreement to say, we would like this service, and we're prepared to pay for it, or we're not, and whatever. So, and that being said, we have a number of contractual agreements with outside agencies. We are snowplowing as a contractual agreement. Our garbage disposal is a contractual agreement. It's, it's, it's just a negotiated agreement like anything else. The other thing that's noteworthy, Your Worship, is that we entered an MOU with Altsville Theater. Now, I was not privy or present during that discussion, but I don't think there was a set of criteria in place that determined whether we were prepared to give them money or not. They came and said, we have a service, would you like to help us? The municipality, I assume, said yes. We have a contractual agreement, or at least a funding agreement with the former Innovation Center, that came and said, we have this thing we're trying to do, will you give us some money? And I'm assuming, although I wasn't present when the council did that, there was not a set of criteria in place to say, well, this is how it works. We said, yeah, this sounds a good idea, so fine, we'll fund it, or we won't, or whatever. When the River Institute came before City Council, what was it, a million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, that we ponied up at the time? And there was no set of criteria ahead of time that said, this is how we're doing it so we can do it, or no thanks, I'm sorry, we don't have criteria, too bad, have a nice day. Are there outside agencies out there that provide services that need funding? Sure. I just thought, perhaps clearly I read the room wrong, the council seemed to think this was a good service, and that we would hope that it would kind of succeed, but perhaps I was mistaken. But to say we shouldn't fund them or enter an MOU, we enter with all kinds of groups in the city, outside organizations in which we draw contractual agreements, that we say, these are the things we want, and here's what we're prepared to spend, and they say, that sounds good to us, and we sign, and you as the mayor sign it, and we as council endorse it. So it's been done before many, many times with many organizations without a clear set policy in place ahead of time. And I've only listed a couple, I suspect, which I don't need to, it's not necessary, but I'm sure our CFO could probably rhyme off a number of other outside groups that we have MOUs with or contractual deals, and we just do it, and that's how it works. I suspect I'm going to lose, but for whatever reason, please don't base it on the notion that we have to have criteria, because that's kind of bogus. We don't have criteria for everything we do. We don't. Thank you, Your Worship, for your patience.
Counselor Gardner.
Altsville Theater was a three-party MOU, with the management group, the city, and the college. So it's not just the city that's giving them money, or was giving them money in the MOU. It was a three-partnership.
Thank you. I'm going to call the vote.
Record a vote, Madam Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Claude McIntosh?
Against the motion.
Elaine McDonald?
Against.
Sid Gardner?
Against.
Dean Hollingsworth?
In favor.
Counselors Kathleen Ebert?
Opposed.
Maurice Dupell?
Opposed.
Glenn Grant?
Oppose.
Todd Bennett?
Opposed.
Counselor Eric Bergeron?
In favor.
And Madam Mayor?
Opposed.
It's been defeated, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item?
Our next resolution is a bylaw to prohibit open air burning of solid fuels within the boundaries of the municipality, and to repeal bylaw 2014-63. It was moved by Counselors Bennett and Gardner. Madam Mayor?
So I'll turn to Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I would like to withdraw this motion at the time. I think it needs a little bit more work, and I didn't want to just come up here today and, and throw three or four ideas at everybody with no time to digest it, so I think it's best that we withdraw it tonight and bring it to another council meeting in the future.
I'm going to turn to the secondor, Counselor Gardner. Is that?
Counselor Bennett, because I did get, receive some phone calls, and so did he, and there are some adjustments that we can make to it, so I would prefer, as Counselor Bennett said, to wait till the next meeting and bring it forward.
Any further comments from council? So I seek consensus to withdraw the motion?
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
To introduce changes to the bylaw, would have to come through notice of motion again.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, I know you've been doing a lot of work. This is the kind of work that is not easy, and it, it happens between council meetings, it happens in terms of communicating with the public and with each other, and I appreciate the work that you're doing on this. Again, it is not easy. Madam Clerk.
And our third resolution, transition of the Blue Box to full producer responsibility. Therefore be it resolved that the City of Cornwall transition its Blue Box program to full producer responsibility, starting April 1st, 2024. This decision is based on the following rationale. Curbside collection contract with Environmental 360 Solutions commenced on April 1st, 2019, and includes early termination clause. Information from AMO and Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, grants provided by the Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority, consultation with SDNG Regional Waste Management Collaboration Efforts, consultation with regional recycling, recycling partners who bring recyclables to the City of Cornwall's Materials Recovery Facility, and that the City of Cornwall provide collection services to producers, should we be able to arrive at mutually agreeable commercial terms, and further that any questions regarding this resolution be directed to Carl Goodwin, Division Manager of Environmental Services, and further that the resolution be forwarded to AMO and the MECP.
Madam CEO, I'm going to turn to you for maybe some further introduction of the matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to refer it to Mr. Bill Dewitt.
Mr. Dewitt.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We're simply looking for support from council to move this process forward. This has been going on for about 10 years, where we, the, the industry's been trying to get the producers of the waste materials to essentially cover the costs associated with the recycling of that material. So we're looking for a council resolution to help us move this forward tonight.
Council, questions, motion? Counselor Grant? Okay. The motion as presented or as read by Madam Clerk? Seconded by Counselor Dupell? Debate? Counselor Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some questions. So in the report, it states that the producers would take on financial and operational responsibilities. I understand financial. Can we know a little bit more about what operational responsibilities would need? I, I understand here that the city would still be responsible for curbside pickup, but what happens when they get to the recovery facility or the landfill? Is, is it the, the producers who are then managing that, or are they just funding us to continue operation? Will it mean fewer kinds of materials will be picked up, because we're only picking up what the producers are making? So just want some clarification on what the actual outcome looks like.
Mr. Dewitt?
Through you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that the producers actually issue the contracts for collection, and they'll actually issue the contracts for the, the processing and the, the, the selling of the material. The, with regard to the number of materials, if there's going to be any change at this point in time, we don't have an answer at this point in time. There's still negotiations that are going on with the province, and with the producers, and with the municipalities at this point, and it's still ongoing.
Counselor Ebert?
Yeah, so, so I understand that the conversation is still happening, so if we can be kept up to date on that part, well, I mean, the whole thing, but my concern is that there's, during the transition, we will lose some items that will be picked up. I've seen municipalities transition, and then all of a sudden, they stop picking up glass, for whatever reason. So these are just some concerns that I have. I'm very happy to hear that, you know, this is moving forward, and they'll be paying for the actual recycling of their own materials, but I'm just a little concerned that it may reduce the amount of recyclable items in our community. I do have some questions. I'm, just one, let's eliminate this one. This does tie into this report. There has been a desire to reduce our garbage bag limit, and I know that that was, to come back to council, I'm just wondering if there's a timeframe as to when we're going to hear about administrations' recommendations to reduce that, which will directly impact some of this other work.
Mr. Dewitt?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I don't have an answer for you at this moment in time. My, my understanding is that in the Solid Waste Management Master Plan, there is a date of when we were supposed to come back to you. I will ask, I will ask, would you bear with us? And I will search it, and I'll get you an answer.
I, I will follow up with Carl as well, and, and bring it back to council if, if there's nothing said. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald, and then Counselor McIntosh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was asked and answered.
Counselor McIntosh, and then Counselor Gardner.
When we go to this new system, really, it's the province that's going to say, here it is, get it done. Each municipality doesn't decide this on their own. Am I right?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I'm going to ask you to repeat that question, the last part?
It's, when we, when the province is pushing ahead with this plan, and it won't be up to each municipality whether they're going to opt in or not, it's a provincial plan.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that is correct. They, the, the movement is towards the producers by the end of 2025, to pick up all the costs associated with the Blue Box program.
And we have an opt-out agreement with the, the current collector of recycling material?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we do. We have clauses in there that we can get out of our collective agreement. Our previous waste management person, Danielle Watson, was very, she was on top of this, and she had built it into the clauses that we'd have an opt-out ability.
Okay. Any idea, like, this would be a cost saving for the city, wouldn't it?
Through you, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we're, we're certainly hoping that's the way it's going to be. We want to, as, as we know, the Blue Box program is an expensive program, and we're trying to, and, and there's been many, I'll say, many, through AMO, many complaints about the cost of the program, and so this is the, the ministry's way of coming back to try to reduce those costs and put it back on the producer.
Oh, this is a program that I believe went back to Dalton McGinty's era, and I was really happy to see that the current government picked up on it and running with the ball.
Counselor Gardner?
My question was answered by Mr. McIntosh. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Bergeron?
No questions.
Yep, my questions were also asked by Counselor Mack. I do have the same service level concerns as Counselor Ebert as well, so factor that in, and then wait for follow-up on the other, the other issues. Thank you. So we'll call the vote. All in favor? Against?
In favor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Unfinished Business Reports, St. Antoine subdivision vehicular ingress and egress solutions, with a recommendation that council endorses the proposed additional traffic measures discussed in this report and included in the traffic impact assessment as fulfillment of draft plan condition number 27 of Phase 1 of the St. Antoine Draft Residential Plan of Subdivision and associated rezoning application submitted by Clark Consulting Services at the September 16th, 2019 Planning Advisory Committee Meeting.
Madam CEO, was there somebody that wanted to present before we go further?
Through you, Madam Mayor. This has been on the unfinished business list soon for a few months, originated per the report, coming out of a PAC meeting. We did, our Transportation Department has been working with the consultant to come up with solutions. I'm going to redirect it to Mr. Fotherup. He might want to add some comments, or certainly we're available to answer any questions from council on the report.
Mr. Fotherup?
Yes, so through you, Madam Mayor. This is a report which is a follow-up to the draft plan of subdivision for St. Antoine. That was before PAC late in 2019, and the request for a report from staff on the traffic issues noted by the residents at the meeting. So as council will recall from the PAC meeting, a number of residents voiced concerns with the proposed subdivision, in particular, the traffic impacts on the intersection of Old McConnell Avenue and McConnell Avenue. At the PAC meeting, the draft plan was approved with the condition that a report be brought back to council, which identified how the traffic issues have been addressed. So as noted in the report, the traffic study proposes a dedicated left-turning lane on Old McConnell Avenue, as well as warning flashers on McConnell Avenue, which will warn motorists of the upcoming intersection. City administration sent the proposed traffic improvements to the impacted residents and requested comments on the proposed modifications be provided. Administration is of the opinion that the proposed improvements at the intersection will certainly improve the operation of the intersection and address any residents' concerns.
Thank you for that. I do recall that PAC meeting. It was, it was a good discussion, so I'll turn to council now for either a motion or questions. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, I have questions. In fact, I've got reservations about the, the strategies outlined in the report. I think that adding the left-turn lane to go from the old McConnell onto St. Antoine is a step in the right direction, but I think a motorist will still have a nightmare time trying to make a left, say, onto the new McConnell if they choose to go south. But diverting some of the traffic that's going north, past the St. Antoine intersection, up to the tail end, the northern end of, of the old McConnell, is, is a good move, so that'll take care of something. But I still think the distance from Tollgate Road to 11th Street, which I think is the, that's the span we're talking about here, right? There are no lights or any sort of traffic slowdown mechanisms between Tollgate and 11th. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know the distance from Tollgate to 11th, but maybe you know off the top of your head, but it seems to me for a major road, having no interruption to the flow of traffic, the flashing lights to let people know there's an intersection aren't going to say, please stop and let somebody through that intersection. You know, I, I think they're relatively innocuous. I like the left-turn lane thing and the advisement to go north. I like the left-turn lane thing and the advisement to go north to the northern end of the old McConnell to get out onto the new McConnell, but what a nightmare trying to get out of that subdivision. I've tried it, and there's 70 pages here of very technical data to support the suggestion that this is going to be a fix, but I don't know, maybe, can you convince me? That's going to help.
Mr. Fathrip, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So through you, Madam Mayor. I think it's also important to note that we will be proceeding with the LeMay Street extension, which will include a roundabout at the McConnell and LeMay Street intersection. So on the south side of the overpass, that roundabout will actually help in slowing traffic down on McConnell Avenue. In regards to this particular intersection, I think signals aren't warranted for the traffic volumes, and this proposed subdivision in particular, I think, will only increase the delays just a few seconds, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, just a supplement then. I read about the, I knew we were going to have a roundabout there, but I didn't think it was soon. When will it be? I mean, this would be obviously satisfactory.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So next year, we'll be proceeding with the roundabout at Sidney Street. So that's Phase Three of the LeMay Street project. The following year, you know, and subject to budget approval, we would be proceeding with Phase Four, which would be the roundabout at McConnell.
So we're talking 2020?
2022.
For relief or the beginning of the project?
For construction of the roundabout.
Okay, well, then I'll take back my reservations, and thank you for the good work and good planning.
Counselor Mack?
My question was roundabout two that would slow down traffic, and 2022 sounds okay to me.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I kind of agree with Counselor McDonald. One question is that traffic slows down before it goes on the overpass with this new roundabout. But what's to stop people from, once they get through the roundabout, as they kind of get over the overpass, they're going to still accelerate, correct? Like coming back down the other side?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. They'll certainly be able to pick up speed leaving the roundabout, but they're being slowed down coming out of it.
Assuming that we support the recommendation, and it doesn't, like, I got the sense from that PAC meeting, Your Worship, that people were saying, like, it's not so much getting onto St. Antoine, it was trying to get across McConnell Avenue. If you're going back into town proper, south on McConnell, well, that's fine that you've got this deal where you can go north on McConnell, but the real issue, I would think, and I'm just speculating here, that people coming out of that little subdivision are trying to get back into town, the hospital or downtown, whatever. So how does this little, this particular little turning lane fix that problem?
So through you, Madam Mayor. So one of the issues the residents noted was that there is a long queue backing up, and this subdivision would increase that queue. The report also notes that a gap will occur that will allow that turning movement within 30 seconds. So that turning movement to go southbound on McConnell Avenue, a sufficient gap will occur within 30 seconds of being at that intersection.
What recourse do the residents have if it doesn't work?
Through you, Madam Mayor. They can certainly, you know, bring the issue to us. We can certainly review it, and if there's a major transportation issue there, we will certainly address it. However, I think, you know, there certainly hasn't been very many accidents at that intersection. It's been, has a very safe history. So again, I think from our perspective, the comments in the report are accurate.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Fathrip.
Any other comments? Counsel Bergeron?
Yep. I mean, look, I support this. It's not a lot. It's a good first step. I think there's two or three extra phases here once we start developing that subdivision. But for now, for moving forward, I think it's the beginning of a solution.
Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So given that construction will begin of the roundabout in 2022, when will, is this subdivision, when is Phase One slated to be operational, like, in, done, built?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We really don't know. It really depends on what the developer is proposing. I can tell you that we haven't received anything to date, so I'm thinking-
So the road will be fixed first, likely, I think, before it's built?
Through you, Madam, or through you, Madam Mayor, in regards to the roundabout, are you speaking?
Yeah.
It's hard to say. It really is. It really depends on the developer. The subdivision process does take time to occur, so, you know, it'll certainly be closer to the date, that's for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel McDonald, your question is exactly the one asked. So we received three comments, and they're all at page 97, and so one resident asked, do you know the developer's timeline expectations on this? So it's obviously relevant. I agree with Counsel Bergeron. It's a step in the right direction. I think we need to move forward with this. It makes sense. It already needs to be done regardless of what happens to the development. It's something that we should be doing. So it's a first step, and to Counselor Hollingsworth's point, if they come back, if there are still issues, then we look at this again. Am I correct in that understanding, Mr. Fathrip?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'll call a vote. Was there a mover? Thank you, Madam CIO. We need a motion. Counsel Gardner? As recommended in the materials, seconded by Counsel McDonald. All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried.
Cat control strategy bylaw with a recommendation that council receive this report as presented and proceed to amend bylaw 112, 1998, the animal control bylaw, to allow for the registration of cats and provide for an exemption to approved fostering organizations.
Counsel DePell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move the motion, the recommendation that's before us, but if I may, through you, I would just also like to send some congrats to Mr. Bray and to the department, the bylaw department. I was really pleased to read the report. I was really pleased to see the route that we were going. This has been around for probably my terms off council, so I was really pleased, and I think it's a great approach as to how we're going to do this. It's not the solution to everything, but it has to start somewhere. So through you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Bray, I just wanted to make sure he conveys my congratulations to the department for doing such a great job on this report.
Thank you, Counsel DePell. Seconded by? Counsel Ebert's hand was right up there. So we'll have a debate. Mr. Bray is in the room, so if you have questions, Counsel Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I read this report, you know, I can see what it's trying to do. My question is, I can remember for a few years, we've had a lot of groups, made a lot of noise about this particular issue, and rightfully so. Were any of them involved in this discussion? Have they seen this before tonight? I'm just curious what the reaction would have been.
Should I turn that directly to Mr. Bray? Mr. Bray?
Pardon me, through you, Madam Mayor. Most of this research was conducted in the previous report that was presented to council back in, I believe it was November. At that moment, there was different steps that were taken. There was the public consultation, the survey that was done. Mr. Rogers had consulted with the various organizations, but for this particular report, it was just based on that previous information.
Thank you for that. So in your opinion, are you comfortable with the fact that all these groups will be, for the most part, comfortable with this bylaw?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think the goal is to try and spay and neuter as many cats as possible. I believe it'll be well-received. I think the idea is that we are able to get as many cats done. We've already had some discussions with a provider to do some of the spaying and neutering. There's some discussions about getting a clinic done later this year. Obviously, COVID will play a role in that, but we're looking forward to doing that this year.
Thank you.
I'll turn to cat owner, Counselor Mack.
Thank you. Longtime cat owner, indoor cat. We're proposing a licensing of cats, is that right?
Mr. Bray?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I was surprised when I talked to you before the meeting that you said 3,500 dog licenses are out there. That struck me like a lot of dog licenses. When it comes to the cats, that's a different animal. And I'm just wondering-
Counselor Mack?
You're going to, what would be the cost of getting a cat licensed?
Mr. Bray?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So essentially, we've mirrored the same approach that we do with dogs presently. So for example, a dog that has been altered or spayed or neutered, it's $25. There are some provisions in the fees for late and whatnot, but essentially, the fee is $25, and if it is unaltered or not spayed or neutered, it would be $50.
Okay. But we have a large homeless cat population, and they wouldn't be licensed. I'm just wondering about, I agree with everything that's in here, but when it comes to enforcement, we pass, a lot of times, we pass bylaws and that, then they almost become unenforceable. Could this be a real problem trying to enforce this one?
Mr. Bray?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It will take some time as people get accustomed to this new registry, but that is something that will take time.
Well, I think we're going in the right direction with this one, and I'll support it.
Any further comments? Counsel Bergeron?
No comments.
So before I call the vote, I'll add my comments, and I echo the comments of Counsel DePell. This is about investing in a long-term plan. What we had been doing in the past was sort of fits and starts, and what this says is we're going to put money into spay and neuter programs over a five-to-10-year period, and that is what reports show will help with the situation. Can't do it one year and then not another year. It's got to be a steady investment into this process. I like that we've kept the financial assistance piece for subsidized spay and neuter program as well, so I think that this is a reasonable approach. I heard CBC interview this morning. I heard somebody from a fostering organization and speaking about this report, and so there is attention that has been paid to this issue in Cornwall. I think that this is a reasonable approach, and I'm glad that we're moving forward. All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried. Thank you.
Placemaking. Action recommended is that council receive this report, that the city seek public input regarding urban placemaking designs, either through the recreation master plan review or within a waterfront project if applicable, or through a separate public communications request, and that staff continue to work with local businesses in creating or expanding parklets and patios.
Counsel Bennett? Seconded by Counsel DePell. Maybe I'd like to turn to Mr. Bualow to give an overview before we take questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this, of course, results from a presentation that is pre-COVID, was presented to us in February. It's really sort of an urban planning subject, and I think is really looking for beautification in a couple of examples. The first one was with respect to the crosswalk that is proposed. There are, of course, as the report indicates, a couple of challenges with doing a path that is used by vehicles. One, of course, is with respect to insurance and liability, which is outlined, and secondly, with respect to just the maintenance of that path because of the vehicles, especially in an urban and downtown location. And so the recommendation here is that we not do a vehicular corridor, but rather select a location in the downtown or in Le Vilage, for example, and I've given some examples in the report. The Benson Center, the, here at the complex, the justice space, the justice building space or city hall space as well. There are all kinds of lanes that we have in the downtown, so there are some opportunities where we can do something creatively and perhaps invite the public to participate in that, which is basically the idea of placemaking, to allow the public to participate. And then on the subject of parklets, and so not just parklets, but also use of the urban corridor that is either Pitt Street or Le Vilage or other locations. As I provided in the last report, our Pitt Street with the Wunorf design really allows for the bumpouts that are currently in place, and of course, now, it's kind of funny because this, of course, was pre-COVID, but now we're dealing very much with those bumpouts and those urban parklets and so on. And as the report indicates, there are, in fact, about 32 restaurants we're dealing with in Cornwall, some in downtown, some not in the downtown, and I think they're all doing a great job. We're trying to help where we can, and especially in the Pitt Street or downtown area, where they have no opportunities within their private parking lots. So we're trying to help in that respect, and we expect-
Did you say 32?
32 restaurants.
Woo-hoo! Sorry.
So, and, you know, if you drive around, you see some really creative ideas from different owners. Some have real difficult issues with respect to space, but we expect we're going to continue working with them. That doesn't come without challenges. There are some challenges, and we're, it's not, and it's not just my area, it's, you know, the engineering department, municipal works, and so on, all working together to try to help the restaurateurs. As the report indicates, we visited the downtown with Ms. Bergeron and stopped at every restaurant that wanted to have a conversation with us, and you're starting to see some of the results of that. So we will continue to work with them. There are a couple of other items that are talked about in her report, the waterfront, and of course, the public's been very involved, very engaged in that document. I expect in 2020 or in 2021 that we're going to really roll up our sleeves with a committee to start to look at some of those projects that are urban projects in some cases, and I won't go into the details, but the report speaks to some of those. And then finally, she talks a little bit about future projects, some of which we're currently dealing with, the library and the front entrance, and there is some interest there by the adjacent restaurant, the murals, which we have a lot of experience with, the pop-up parks, which Counselor Bennett has talked about, and we have been working with Counselor Bennett. Unfortunately, with the COVID situation, it has made things a little bit challenging, I think, for that, but we do think that there are some opportunities for the pop-up small seat containers to be used in various locations in the community. And then the lighting up of a Cornwall sign, we've talked about that in the past as well, and I think the public would be happy to participate in that. So those are just general ideas, but I think, you know, Ms. Bergeron's request, we're going to be able to meet in a different way with the first option, and with respect to parklets and use of encroachments and that sort of thing. There's a lot of work that's been done, and there's more, a lot more work to be done, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bualow. Thank you, Mr. Balo. Counselor McDonald and then Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, on, on this note, I just want to commend, uh, city worker Norma Lefave, who apparently has painted thirty picnic tables, uh, all different colors.
They're gorgeous.
Yeah, so they're gonna be appearing soon. Hopefully the restrictions against sitting down on any public table will be lifted by then so we can enjoy these, uh, picnic tables. But I'm also, if I may, I'd like to direct a question to, uh, Jamie Fathrop because we had a conversation a while ago when a, a resident was inquiring about benches along, you know, certain walking paths. And unfortunately, it's really expensive, but there is a possibility of residents to, say, buy a memorial bench, right? And maybe you could tell us how much they would be.
Is there a mic available for Mr. Fathrop? Yes, please.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, we do, um, have in the past done memorial benches. Um, the, however, the, the cost is fairly, uh, prohibitive for most. It, the, the cost can range anywhere from five to six thousand dollars. Um, the benches we purchase have been standardized, sort of black, flat wrought iron, um, style, does very well. Um, but we install them on concrete pads as well. So the cost to do that involves the construction of the concrete pad as well as the supply and installation of the bench. What we do find is quite often, most people that are interested in, in memorializing somebody, we do have a memorial tree planting program, which is much more affordable. An option to do it without a plaque for four or five hundred dollars. And then with a granite plaque, I believe, is eight or nine hundred. And that, that seems to be a little more popular for most.
Thank you.
Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Abah.
Well, I, uh, Counselor McDonald beat me to it. I saw a couple of those tables and I just thought it might be a good idea if we send her an official thank you very much for taking the initiative to do what she did. It's beautiful, beautiful work.
I think I'm gonna have the CAO comment on that af, after, after we're done. Uh, Counselor Abah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate, um, any member of administration who was involved in getting some of those pop-out, uh, patios set up. Um, I was away for a couple of days and I came down and drove through the downtown and it was like vibrant and alive. And, um, it's really great, amazing to see, so congratulations on that. Um, but that leads me to say I want to see more. Um, I think our community, I think everyone in, in general is wanting to see more of this kind of work, especially with COVID. Um, you know, mental illness is on the rise and, and I think people want to get out of their homes and be in vibrant, happy spaces. And it doesn't need to cost a lot of money to do some of this work, like painting picnic tables, uh, which is really great. And you can engage the community in possibly fundraising for some of these efforts. They don't have to rely completely on city budget. I'm a li, I'm a little disappointed in, in some of the comments in the report with regards to the painted, um, crosswalks and whatnot. It's happening in many, many communities, so a little disappointed that we went as far as getting a legal opinion here. Um, so, but encouraged to hear that there's potential of doing it in other safer spaces. Um, curious to know what is next. Um, because we're having a lot of really great conversations about these kinds of projects, but there's never a concrete next step. There is here an opportunity to do some separate public engagement on some of these requests. Is that a concrete thing that's going to happen in the next month? Um, I know COVID is keeping us busy, but I think this is really the right time to do some of this work. Um, and if there is public consultation, what are some of the, the top priority projects that administration would like to see in that consultation? And, and what are things that administration are actually going to do over the next several months? Um, so I, I guess my, my main question is the public, um, consultation. I, I understand that we're doing some waterfront stuff and we're doing some recreation master plan stuff. And I, that all intermingles, but I'd love to see something more specific to this, tied into some of these options that were suggested. And, and to see, you know, not only is, what are the, the ideas the public has? What are their input on, on some of these ideas? But maybe there's a group that will come forward to help with some fundraising, et cetera. So I, I'm wondering if we're gonna see something specific to this happen.
So we'll turn to Mr. Balo.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, I think the way I see it is that we would either work with Ms. Bergeron, who came up with the idea, or, and/or, uh, we could work with Emma, uh, Meldrum, who, you know, this, this could be something that we could put out there, uh, either as a city project or just a community project. We could request ideas from people. I find that with COVID, um, whether it's the re, recreation master plan or the arts center or the zoning bylaw, we're getting a lot of reaction out of the public, uh, you know, either by emails or through requests for information. So I think this would be a good time, um, to request public involvement and engagement in a project. And perhaps again, that, that could be a downtown project. Uh, and maybe we ask the public where they'd like it to be, whether it's at the Benson or the Justice Building or the, you know, downtown corridor, uh, the complex, et cetera. So, um, it's something that we can put out and, and get the reaction out of the public fairly easily, uh, especially at this time.
I just, I want to see some follow-up, right? This is really great, this is super positive, not crazy, uh, expensive. And so I think it's just the right time to continue working on this and to build on all the really great work that has already happened.
Thank you. Counselor Mack.
Thank you. Um, really, the extended patios adds a, a flavor to the downtown area. Even if the person's just got two or three tables out in front and there's something about, I don't know, you often go to Old Montreal, I just enjoy going down there and the patios and the feeling of everything, it's in the summer. Um, in fact, it's all one patio extension. Uh, the person's put out plants, hanging plants and everything, it's, uh, real neat. Uh, when it comes to the signs entering the city, you know those signs that, uh, coronal population, whatever it is, forty-seven thousand? Are they mandated by the province? You have to have those signs up?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, some of the signs that we have are municipal signs and so, uh, however, those, some of the signs that you're speaking of with population, that sort of thing are direct, are through, so they have to be approved by the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario?
We have to have them up, though?
Uh, I'm not quite sure that we actually have to have them up.
Just that when we come in from the, uh, from the long, coming, uh, eastbound on Highway Two, you've got the beautiful sign up on Ganeville Park. And you've got the tacky, I call it a tacky sign just before that. And I'm just wondering why we have to have that sign when you got the really, uh, nice sign up in Ganeville Park saying, "Welcome to Cornell," I think it says, "Welcome to Cornell." And anyway, a friend from mine from Atlanta was visiting the city and one of the things he remarked was he came in from Ottawa, one-thirty-eight, and he said, "God, you gotta get a better sign."
Yeah. Now, the, of course, the highway, the four-oh-one highway sign is the one that, uh, seems to be a little bit more updated. The one that you're referring to, in fact, as I noticed myself last week, uh, is looking like it needs to be replaced. Now, we can certainly inquire as to whether it has to be there or whether it doesn't have to be there.
Yeah, I thought maybe that's something you had to identify your population picture. Uh, last term, maybe the term before that, we talked about corner Brookdale and Water sign in that vacant field?
Yes.
Where are we going with that?
That is, uh, that is actually out in a, we have the design. It's, it's in place. Um, that is together with the wayfinding signage that is throughout, uh, Lamro Park. Uh, so those projects have been combined. Uh, Mr. Fathrop's been working on that. Not sure, Jamie, if you've got more to add to that?
Uh, yes, uh, that, um, it has been awarded to a contractor. We'll see construction of, uh, of both of those, uh, projects, uh, this summer.
Okay, good, sounds good.
Any other comments? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I was a big fan of this placemaking, um, idea when I first heard it, uh, from Kelly Bergeron, when we met, uh, for a coffee to discuss it before she came to us in February. And the idea of what it was gonna do to our downtown and in Le Village areas, you know, I was so excited when I left that meeting. I almost wanted to build a parklet and paint a sidewalk before I went home. But when I came to council, I thought, okay, this is a great first start, uh, first step. And I was really, um, hoping that this wasn't gonna be one of those reports that ended up on a shelf. And I just wanted to say, you know, I'm really happy with, that this is progressing. I really, really appreciate administration's efforts on this. And I'd really want to say thank you to Kelly Bergeron for bringing this forward because, um, this, uh, this lady has some really good ideas. And she's creating, she's trying to help us create an exciting place to be. So when you're looking at something to do, you want to go downtown because as Counselor MacIntosh said, there's a vibe down there with all this going on. And this is after COVID. Like, can you imagine when we get over a year from now, what it's gonna be like to go downtown if they're still doing these kinds of things? And, and Le Village, if they get on board and they can do some things to make it as exciting down there as it is in, in our downtown, uh, this is just a win-win-win all the way around. And it's, as Counselor Abah said, it's not that expensive. It's, uh, and there's so many ideas out there, and I'm glad to hear that we're gonna be going to the community, looking for their ideas as well. Because, uh, uh, there's, there's so much potential here and I just want to see it all realized. So kudos to everybody involved.
Anyone else? Counselor Bergeron?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I mean, I, I support the resolution. I, I think these are great. Um, it's great to see downtown kind of restaurants opening up. That was, uh, something we've been discussing for a little bit. I hope it lasts longer than just COVID relief. It's really, uh, making our, our downtown and even not, not just the downtown, some of the places where these restaurants are. Uh, I, I do find the report a little bit bureaucratic. I, I kind of echo Counselor Abah's comments, I won't dive too deep. Um, but generally, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of this. I, I think it's great. I think if we're celebrating things like painting picnic tables, which is a quick, easy item, we should be looking for a lot of other things like that that can just be done quickly, don't have a big budget and that can have a huge impact. The report seems to be a little more, uh, on the long-term plan of this. I'd really like us to stay focused on what we can do right now, short-term. Maybe that's something we throw to the, uh, Economic Recovery Task Force. Maybe that's something that we just move forward with quickly. Um, because we seem to be really excited about the things that have been done that are very quick and easy. And I really want to stay focused on that kind of stuff. So I support this.
Thank you. The Cornwall Lit Up Sign, what is that? Is that the Instagrammable Cornwall sign that we've been talking about?
Uh, yes, actually, uh, we have had a number of conversations about that. And so, yes, it would be, you know, your typical, you've seen it in Ottawa, you've seen it in Kingston, uh, where we have, uh, you know, what, and of course, that's a, that's a very important project that the community could certainly get engaged in. You know, what's the best location? Uh, we've talked a little bit about how you may want to put it in Lamro Park near the clock tower. Uh, it's gotta be in a place where people are gonna, you know, want to be photographed. Do, you know, perhaps the river is behind that, that name and, and so it has a good relationship with the St. Lawrence Seaway, so. Um, it, but the community could get involved in something like, like that. And, and perhaps Ms. Meldrum could, could help with that as well to, to get ideas of, seek, uh, input into what it should look like, where it should be.
So, somebody asked me the other day, what is placemaking? What does that mean? And, and clearly it's about sparking our imagination in terms of what we can see and what we can see as possible. And sometimes that has to do with timing, right? So there's pre-COVID and post-COVID, it's kind of a weird time. But, you know, you'll recall a couple of weeks ago when we started to think about this, it was still cold and dreary and we were talking about closing down Pitt Street and everybody went, so it, it, this is a process of change that takes time. And that we need to, you know, sometimes it takes sunshine and actually seeing picnic tables out to get the sense that these things are possible. Um, I was sort of disappointed that we stopped the conversation about downtown then, but maybe it wasn't the time, maybe it wasn't presented in a way that was palatable or understandable for the community. But once the sun shines and you go downtown and you see the colors and you see the possibilities, then your mind is a little bit more open. So, uh, I'm very encouraged by this and I thank, uh, Ms. Bergeron and all of the city staff who have been on fire with this. Apparently Mr. Doyle has run ragged with hospital, uh, sorry, restaurant requests for patios. So that's great. Um, and so we thank city staff and, and I think the CAO may want to comment on how excited staff have been about all of this.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been, I think, a really good, uh, experience for staff, uh, starting with, uh, Norma painting picnic tables in the, uh, arena area in the civic complex. And then you have a few bright colors and then Mr. Balo starts to show photos. Everybody thinks it looks great. She paints, her plan, I think, was to paint twelve tables. I think we asked for twenty-nine or thirty. And I have a feeling we might try to keep some of that stuff going, so we might need to get Norma some help. Um, but, uh, with the, um, patios and, uh, making space, I can tell you that staff have been pretty quick to want to try and respond. If we can, uh, help quickly, uh, get things, uh, set up and open, uh, I think they have done a great job. So thank you for those comments. Uh, downtown is looking brighter and, uh, I think that all of this helps, you know, as we move into weeks ahead and maybe some of the restrictions lift even a little bit further, allow for more people to get out and gather.
Thank you. And yes, as Counselor Bennett said, thank you to Ms. Bergeron for sparking all of our imagination around this stuff. There was a motion. Gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Against?
In favor.
Carried. Madam Clerk? Our next report is the outdoor gardening with the recommendation that council continue to endorse and support residential food gardens for personal use and for city administration to further promote permitted gardening activities and Eastern Ontario Health Unit Guidelines for Safe Food Handling. And B, that council continue to endorse community gardening and support the establishment of new garden spaces and for city administration to define and consider community gardens during the comprehensive zoning bylaw review and the recreational master plan review. And C, that city administration prepare a more comprehensive report on urban agriculture for the regular council meeting of November twenty-third. Moved by Counselor Abah, seconded by Counselor DePauw. Discussion or, I guess we have Mr. Balo, we have Ms. Rendek in the room as well to answer questions, so Counselor Abah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Rendek for an excellent report. She's done a great job, you can tell this is really her forte. Um, I do have some questions, some comments, I believe, for, for both, um, Mr. Balo and Ms. Rendek. Uh, I'm glad that one of the recommendations is, um, to come back with a more comprehensive report, which is great because I think this deserves some more attention. I'm wondering if there were any, if any thought has been given to possibly looking at the Local Food Infrastructure Fund, which is a grant that has just come out, uh, through the government of, of Canada. There's forty-three point three million dollars there specifically for projects right down, um, this, this alley. So when we're talking about community gardens and community kitchens and, um, urban infrastructure and, or urban agriculture, this all fits within that grant. So I'm wondering if there's been any consideration to looking for some funding for this. Through you to Ms.-
Mr. Balo first?
Yeah, actually, all I'm going to do is, is hand this over to Ms. Rendek, who, I, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Rendek to come to the presentation table. Um, I, I want to, uh, thank her for writing this report. I think we're fortunate that she is, uh, in the department at this time because, uh, this is really a subject that not many, uh, in, you know, with municipal, municipality have, uh, a lot of experience in. And so Ms. Rendek was able to write this report. I can perhaps play a small role, uh, with respect to zoning and those types of things. But, uh, certainly I didn't have the information that she had and so I'd ask her to answer the questions.
Ms. Rendek.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, um, economic development is aware of the Local Food Infrastructure Fund. And we've been working with, uh, a number of local agri-food businesses, processing businesses to bring this fund to their attention and perhaps work with them to, to- this fund to their attention and perhaps work with them to, to identify projects that may be relevant, both for their business and for long-term urban agricultural initiatives. That particular fund goes until 2024, so there is time to consider longer-term projects through that funding. Excellent. Couple of comments. I think it's fantastic to see the increase in the compost usage. 382% over last year's number, that's insane. Which, great, great news to see that there is such an interest in gardening at home, growing your own food. Obviously shows the need to proceed with some of this work, so really glad that that's happening. A really great way to include waste management in there. So a great way for us to use all that compost that, that comes in through the leaf and yard waste pickup. Also shows that there's a great need in addressing the food insecurity issue. So even before a pandemic, food insecurity is unfortunately an issue in our community. I don't think we like to acknowledge that there are people going hungry in the city of Cornwall, in the province of Ontario, in our great nation. But it's there, and it's very, it's very real. And so a lot of these initiatives really support other agencies that provide food for lower-income families. They provide educational opportunities for these lower-income families, and then provide really great fresh food that they may not otherwise have access to. Unfortunately, a box of Pogos is a lot more affordable than a box of vegetables and fruit, but this can make this option very more, much more available to, to the residents of Cornwall. So happy to see everything come into one report. Also, when you see the list of community gardens that already exist, there's a column there that expresses the ability to expand, and there's lots with wait lists, and every, every one of those gardens has the opportunity to expand. So that really shows the, the need. And a lot of these social housing units have families that are already starting to garden outside with not a lot of space. So it'd be great to see more of these projects supported by the city, but also property identified by the city. And I think it is mentioned in, if I just go back, sorry. There's a section here on establishing new community gardens, and the environmental constraint lands are mentioned in here. But I'd like to learn a little bit more about what those are and the options that we may have to proceed with some developing of, of these gardens because of those lands. So I'm not sure if Ms. Rendek can answer that, or Mr. Balo.
Ms. Rendek? Mr. Balo, and then Ms. Rendek?
Yep, through you, Madam Mayor. It may be one of the only questions I can answer in this report. It was actually raised in the report by Ms. Rendek that there may be properties that the city owns that could be used for community gardens, and it got me thinking of our environmental constraint, which is that large, very large wetland in the business park, which we've always thought would almost be useless because it is so restrictive with respect to what you can do on it. But, and it probably measures 500 acres. It's, it's massive. So it, and it sits right in the middle of, you know, everything that, all of the Walmart developments and, and the Shoppers Drug Mart distribution centers and that sort of thing. And then there's that large wetland, and then you get into the 401 developments. So it's that very large area. Now, there may be areas that are not developable with community gardens because of wetland characteristics, but there are certainly some edges within that that, that may be developable, and we would work with the Ministry of Natural Resources to determine whether they are developable or not. So it's, it's, at this time, it's an idea, but it is actually a permitted use in the current zoning.
Excellent. Just two follow-up questions. Is that, is there water access on those lands? Because that is absolutely necessary to run a successful community garden. Unfortunately, been part of community gardens that did not have water access, a lot of waste of time and resources there. And then the question's still on the same topic. Is there a way that we can communicate this available land to a lot of these agencies? A lot of these community gardens are run by nonprofits, local agencies. Is there a way we can make that public, communicate to them that this is available, and through some, some contracts and MOUs, we can possibly provide some of this space to continue the great work that's already happening?
So, so the, the first question is water, and I think you're talking about municipal water? Right. So yes, the answer is yes. Depending on the location, so Industrial Park Drive, for example, you know, that corridor and the corridor that will go north, the new road that will go through the, well, in fact, through this wetland and to the interchange of McConnell and, and Tolgate. So there will be water, municipal water through all of that, and so that could easily access these lands that we're talking about. And secondly, I think if we're going, if we were going to do something like this, we would, as I said, we'd probably go with some guidance from MNR to try to make sure that we're, we're doing this correctly. So the one thing we know is, is zoning would allow it. Secondly, to answer your question, services would be provided. And what else do we know, need to know? And we would communicate with MNR on that.
Excellent. I'm, I'm glad that as part of these motions, which should also include to receive this report, I'm not sure if that's one of the recommendations, that there's going to be follow-through and, and, you know, further reports coming to, to council, and really looking forward to that, and glad that we can see Ms. Rendek shine through this kind of work. Thank you very much.
Councillor McIntosh?
Gardens and cats, that's my expertise.
Aye, is true.
The, it's amazing, this year, talking to people who run garden centers, the demand for seeds and plants, they've exceeded, you know, they've exceeded some of the supply. And so it's, it's, whatever brought it on, maybe it was COVID-19 for whatever reason, but people are seen to be getting into gardening more than before. By the way, I cut a head of lettuce for you, and I forgot it at home, but I'll get it to you.
Councillor Mac?
Anyway, I'm glad to see encouragement. Transition Cornwall has a great job, too, in encouraging people with gardening, and Towndros are really into gardening. They've got a massive garden up by the power dam. So it's good to see, and, you know, there was a time when community gardens, Cornwall had community gardens, not that long ago, in the 70s. They had a project, and I think there was one at the corner of Power Dam and Second in that vacant lot, and for some reason, got away from us. But it's good to bring them back. And I was surprised to also see the list here of the community gardens. I didn't realize we had that many. Elaine and I sit on the Cornwall Housing Authority, and they have community gardens, too, in some of the housing units. It's good to see.
Anyone else? Councillor Bergeron.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I think I share the same opinion as councillor Hébert here on pretty much everything she said, so I won't, won't repeat that. I do have a question for Mr. Balo. It's the second time now I see La Vilage submitting a report, and I just don't understand, did we reach out to La Vilage about this? Their commentary on it just seems very different from everything else in the report. I'm just curious here.
Mr. Balo?
I think what happened is the, all of the motions from that meeting were provided to him, and we certainly didn't specifically request comments on this subject. I think he, he certainly was prepared to answer the questions on the, and they were very relevant for the other matters. I think he just chose to provide commentary on this one.
Okay, thank you. Just everything else about it, I'm fine with. Look, this was about, this was about COVID, this was about the summer. This report is a little bit more focused on what we can do long-term, which is a conversation I'm happy to have. If that's the end result of this motion, then I'm glad for it. I look forward to this conversation in November. Ultimately, I think it's a conversation every city should be having.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Rendek, at the end of the report, you say, finally, we are also aware of several funding opportunities currently available to businesses and municipalities to help strengthen the development of local food infrastructure. What does that mean?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So as Ms. Councillor Hébert alluded to, there is Local Food Investment Fund, which is a provincial funding opportunity available currently between now and 2024, 2024, to support business development specific to local food supply chain infrastructure. That, it's a broad project lens, and we could work to, for, for both business, but also community stakeholders to build processing, growing, delivery, warehousing, distribution, waste management, any infrastructure that might be required to support the local food value chain.
So that's from which federal?
It's a provincial funding opportunity.
Provincial, not federal? Does?
No, that is a provincial funding opportunity.
Okay.
And then we have a, from the federal perspective, there is the Canadian Agricultural Partnership. They, that is a shared partnership through the federal government and the provincial governments to, and there are a number of other funding opportunities through that as well, and we could look to those should a project arise as well.
So that'll, so who applies for that? Does it have to be a partnership group locally? Or does it, municipalities don't apply for that?
It would be a, a business and a, with a partner, a community partner.
So the cities wouldn't be involved in that?
If the city was seen to have infrastructure to join in partnership with a business, that could be a, would be a potential opportunity to partner.
Okay. And are we in discussions now around some of that?
Preliminary discussions at this point.
Preliminary discussions? Okay. Okay, because that's, that's the exciting piece, too, is to move all this forward. I know we're feeling that we have opportunities now around all of this, and it's to move forward to make sure that all the right partners are coming together. Thank you, Councillor Mac, for mentioning transitions. Plus, they're always a good partner with all of these projects. This is a great report. It's hopeful. Again, it sparks our imagination as to what's next. As councillor Hébert has said, what's the next thing? So thank you for the report, Ms. Rendek, and for inspiring us to look at different things. These pictures are great, too. Any further comment? All in favor? Against? Carried.
In favor.
Thank you. Our next report is the response to Sunday bus service petition with the recommendation that council receive this report. Moved by councillor Gardner, councillor Grant. Discussion. No discussion? Questions? Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember not so long ago discussing the difficulty we've had trying to get people in the business parks to get bus passes, use the bus service a little bit more. And one of the concerns here, one of the issues brought up was that people that work on Sundays don't have a way to get to their jobs in the industrial park. But it seems to me they're not really using the bus service that way anyway, is, I don't remember the numbers, but I think it was very low, the amount of people that used it in the industrial parks. So I'm just, just wondering if you'd comment on that, please?
So Mr. Tapp is here, and we'll have him come to the mic.
The industrial park, yeah, the numbers are about, about 100 people going to and from, so you got about 200 riders per day going to the industrial park. That's Monday to Friday. We don't even offer Saturday service to the industrial park. I, I guess many years ago, when I sat in the industrial park lunchrooms and tried to encourage people to come and, and take transit, and it seemed to me that the general population is, once, they would take the bus for a first couple of weeks, maybe a month, maybe even six months, then they found their own rides. And, and there is, the parking lots are full in the industrial parks, especially in the larger retailers or, or, just businesses there in general. They, they seem to find a carpooling way, and it, it really does seem to work for them. It's kind of a catch-22 with the industrial park. You would need to send a bus there every 30 minutes all day long in order to build the ridership. But you need the ridership to send it there to make it cost-effective, and that's, that's kind of where, where we stand on that one.
The other thing that was identified was the, possibly the use of handy transit on Sundays. Now, that one seems to make some sense to me. And again, I'm not a professional in your, in your field by any stretch of the imagination, but I would think, you know, church, shopping, like, some people have jobs and that they can only maybe do their shopping on Saturday, Sundays. So that seems like something that might be of, of use, but again, I, I don't know. I'm just hoping you'd have a comment on that.
Well, the comment is, is, is you're right. I mean, sometimes, well, transit is a lifeline to a lot of people with, with disabilities. It's a Monday to Saturday service right now. It's again, how much cost to cover the, the need and how much is the need? Very difficult, and obviously, as I mentioned, in a petition like this. Handy transit and people with disabilities, a unique, unique case. And as I said in the report, we want to look at that a little bit more closely and see what we can offer there, whether we could do it through taxi chits or, or some other kind of on-demand service. There's a lot more opportunities with technologies these days, and that might be the way to start.
That was gonna be my next point, was that, you know, we talked, you talked, I believe, during budget time about buses, like the app we have now, I can track it when a bus is coming to my stop. So if there was an opportunity to maybe only have one or two buses running on, on a Sunday, but that people would basically order it like an Uber, and then the buses would know where to go, so we don't maybe have set routes, but possibly meeting the needs of the people who actually need it? I don't know if that's something that would work. Anyway, it was just something I was thinking about, and I thought I'd throw it out at you.
Sure, and just recently, there seems to be more programs out there, more companies offering that type of service, on, on-demand service, web-based, so it, it really reduced the cost for supervision and, and a whole lot of drivers compared to a smaller amount that could offer that service. So I, I've come here many times and said, not feasible to do it at this time. And again, it's, it's, that's basically what I'm saying. But it's, it's going to come to Cornwall, and I think the new, new technology is the way to do it. I don't think it's going to come, you know, COVID-19 has pushed us back in anything that we're going to do. But at the same time, it, it really becomes, for me, I want to be able to come to council, have the confidence to say, I want to recommend this, it's feasible, there's a need there. I'm, I'm not there just yet. And, and certainly, an, an online petition is not a scientific-based thing that you want to base a decision on.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one question, Len. In terms of a Sunday service, and I don't think you could have an answer right off the top of your head, but if we were to extend our service, like, there was a time when I was a kid where we would run out to St. Andrews, and if we were to extend our service, let's say on a Sunday, to try to broaden our catchment, could we potentially try to make our numbers work then? Or just driving, let's say, a bus to Long Sue and back, or a bus to, I don't know, Glen Walter and back? Is that, would that potentially help us, or is that, have you ever investigated that? Or am I just with kind of, kind of fishing expedition?
Again, during the master plan, the consultants, we tried to contact the counties because you would have to have their buy-in.
Of course.
Sos Stormont, that sort of thing. Sos Stormont wasn't interested at all, because we do get, or we used to get, a lot of calls from the Rosedale terrorist area.
Yes.
And, and it seems that a lot of people walk to our nearest bus stop from that area. So if anything, you'd want to key in on there and that would be a place to, to start something like that. But when we approached them, they were just not interested whatsoever. Now, you know, there's other, other things that came up with a beach run to Long Sioux and, and those type of things. Those things are really, I've kind of heard about them, nobody's really approached me on that one. Lancaster was very interested in having some kind of service and we tried to, we have actually applied for a pilot project grant that we were unsuccessful in, in getting. And it was, it was going to be a partnership with the hospital, St. Joseph's Villa. There were some partners that, that were, were really interested. And so i- in the end, it, it fell through because the criteria was not what the grant was really looking for, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. Just curious.
Any other comments? Counselor Bergeron?
No comments.
Mr. Tapp, the issue of Sunday service for transit has been a recurring theme. As long as I've been on council, we've had this question. I like what you said about Ms. Jeanette Guy, the originator of the petition. She is thoughtful and reasonable and she is the type of person that Cornwall is attracting as well. People who want to come here and live in a place that is affordable and accessible. So I, I certainly understand why this petition is before us. And it is a tough time for transit, you know? Transit has been at the forefront of COVID, right? You, you, your, your drivers were out there throughout this process. There's been a loss of revenue in that department that we are going to have to face. So it's a challenging time. But I appreciate that in the report you say that you're recommending that the city review transit, Sunday bus service as part of the 2022 budget submission, particularly in terms of assisting persons with disabilities. So it's a conversation that continues. And I like that you have treated this petition respectfully and we continue to have the conversation as we go forward. A city needs a transit system and we value it and we continue to get investments from different levels of government because we run a good service. That's why we're attracting these investments. So people are going to keep asking for expanded service. Not surprising that we got this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Against? Carried. Thank you. Ribfest 2020, use of parking lot at Cornwall Civic Complex. Action recommended is that council grant the Optimist Club permission to use the parking lot at the Cornwall Civic Complex for Ribfest 2020. Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Discussion. Counselor Dupell and then Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to begin by saying that I truly support the Optimist Club and all of the good work that they do in our community. But I think as a city councillor this evening, I need to voice concerns for our restaurant owners who have been hit hard by COVID-19. And as much as I would love to see Ribfest come even as a drive-through version, I don't think that we can do this to our restaurants who are just starting to open at patios and some of them who did not do takeout or deliver before had nothing. I really don't, I think we need to stop and reflect. And yes, I think that Optimist Club does great work, but I think that we have to ask ourselves if it isn't time for them to postpone Ribfest like every other major event that has been postponed because of COVID. And I think that we owe it to our restaurants, business owners, that I heard from several of them who have emailed me who said that on a good year, on a regular year, when festivals come to town, yes, we support it because we expect that weekend and we know that our sales are going to be down, but it's engaging the community and it's promoting and supporting festivals. I think that this year is a year of exception. I don't think that our restaurant owners can handle bringing in outside, outer-towners to come here for a whole weekend and do business here where they have suffered and where our administration has bent over backwards to help those businesses that can do business in modified ways outside. I just, I have a couple of concerns. One, I have a concern of enforcing it, having somebody there to enforce that people are only in the areas that are allowed to be in. I see this as being something that's not going to be, be able to be enforced. And I just, I want to advocate on behalf of all our local restaurants, businesses, that we as city council need to stand up tonight and say, we support the Optimist Club, we support the work that they do in our community, and we support having Ribfest and, and other festivals within our community. But this year, I think we need to step back, reflect, and pause on this event. So I will not be supporting the recommendation to support Ribfest 2020 this year.
Counselor Grant and then Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are basically what Counselor Dupell was saying. But hypothetically, if this is approved, we awarded $10,000 municipal grant to the Optimist Club. No, that was for their full weekend and how is, is that $10,000 still going to be granted? Or is it, was that grant based on certain criteria for that weekend?
I'll turn to Madam CFO.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. It's actually not a financial grant that was approved by the committee. It was services in kind, so up to $10,000 services in kind expenses.
So it's up to, up to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. But I agree, our restaurants are having trouble. I order out as much as possible to support them, but I don't think we need to bring in vendors into our community when our restaurants are struggling, so I won't be supporting it.
Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Hollingsworth.
I won't support it, based on the same reasons that Counselor Dupell brought up. However, I, I have a question. Part of the report says that the Optimist Club obtained approval from Eastern Ontario Health Unit. Has that been done?
So is, I don't know if I should ask Mr. Fathrup or Madam CAO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I know that they were working with the health unit. I think I'm gonna also ask Mr. Fathrup.
Mr. Fathrup?
Yes, the Optimist Club has indicated that they do have approval from the Eastern Ontario Health Unit and that they are working with the health unit to establish the, the proper protocols to have in place to ensure physical distancing during, during the event.
Counselor Gardner?
Thank you for that. But at the end of the day, with all due respect to Ribfest and their organizers, as far as I'm concerned, we've lent money to businesses to keep them open. We've, we've done everything we can to support them, to keep me going, keep them going. And we need to continue to support our businesses that are paying taxes. So I won't support this, this motion.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Just a quick question to Mr., I'm assuming Mr. Fathrup might be able to handle this one. Are the majority of the vendors at Ribfest from out of town? Do we know that for sure?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I, I believe, yes, they are all from out of town.
Well, that being said, thank you. That being said, Your Worship, I, I kind of didn't really think about it, but as Counselor Dupell points out, when I grew up, the old adage was take care of your own first and worry about everybody else second. We need to protect our own, times are tough, I'm all about fundraising. We've already gone through that one. But the point is, I, I think we need to help our business community and if I'm buying ribs at Ribfest, I'm not buying ribs at some restaurant. And so I'm sure we'll look like we're kind of putting a wet blanket on this one, but it's a little different animal this year than previous seasons. So I, I can appreciate where Counselor Dupell's coming from. Thank you.
Counselor McIntosh?
I want to thank Counselor Dupell for bringing that to the forefront. It's so true that, especially in the lower part of the city near Lamro Park, it's been a bad year for restaurants and ain't over yet. And I don't think we should be bringing in more competition for them as good a project it is. A lot of fundraising raisers have take, have put it on pause this year, not because they wanted to, because they had to. And I couldn't agree more with what Counselor Dupell just said.
Anyone else? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going through the report here, trying to nail down the dates. I'm just wondering if this is the full program? How many days? Or have they reduced it to, you know, maybe one night on the weekend or?
Mr. Fathrup?
Is it full program?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It is somewhat reduced. Typically, they would operate on, in recent years, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This year, they were proposing to just look at Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay. And then I note that, I mean, this is the highlight of the summer, folks. And I note that they don't have the carnival accompanying the Ribfest, but they do have a Kojiko virtual program, I guess, that's going to be taken, shot here in the complex and, a virtual program. And I'm just wondering if, you know, I, I don't think everybody's going to decide Ribfest or a downtown restaurant. And I kind of think there's nothing coming to town this summer and I'd sure hate to say no. So I'm going to support the, the ask on the part of the Optimist Club for those reasons. It's not going to be as big event as it has in the past, but it will give people something to do in town for one weekend. There'll be very few public events. Have to say, well, I guess it's too soon to say, but I, I know city staff are working on other possibilities, but I'm reluctant to shut the door, so I'm, I'm going to support the ask.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I realize it's been a bad year for restaurants. It's been a really bad year for any kind of business, but it's also been a tremendously terrible year for any nonprofit or service agency. And that's not getting a lot of attention. I know I sound like a broken record and I bring it up, but through a lot of the grants and, and the federal government and the province and, that's not being recognized as much. And so I 100% agree that we need to be supporting our local businesses as much as possible, more than ever, and hopefully that continues into the future. I would, do not want to turn down an opportunity for an organization to raise funds. They found a, I know a lot of fundraisers have been counseled, canceled. They found a creative way to continue something that brings in quite a bit of funds for the Optimist Club. The Optimist Club does a lot of great work that often goes unnoticed, supporting individual families in need. We see them out doing barbecues and doing big community events, but they do a lot of behind-the-scenes work that we don't realize. They're supporting a lot of people in need. And so I, I'd be devastated to see some, one of their biggest fundraisers disappear because that, then they may disappear. And I think that outpour of need for our nonprofits to continue is only going to come once many of our local nonprofits crash, go out of business, stop providing those services because people are going to realize, oh, yeah, I used to get free counseling, didn't realize that was funded through nonprofits. Or, or I used to get this through this service agency and that doesn't exist anymore because they were all nonprofits. And that support is obviously going to be decreased because of the, the, you know, situational poverty. And we understand people can't give, but we need to support creative ways of fundraising in the meantime. And so if, if local business, local restaurants can just sort of, I guess, I don't want to say bite the bullet for a weekend to support a really incredible cause, because I understand their, their, their concerns. I know that they will still be supported through other patrons throughout those, that same weekend. I, I expect them to still be busy. I understand where they're coming from, but I would be heartbroken to stomp on a nonprofits' opportunity to raise funds, especially in this climate. So I will support the recommendation.
Anyone else? Counselor Bergeron?
You know, I've, I've been listening. This is a much more of a debate than I thought it would be. I, I support their, their right to, to host an event here. I'm a big supporter of their local restaurants, but I think in this case, I will be supporting their, their motion as it is. They've come up with a pretty creative way for something that we do every year regardless.
Anyone else? I, I understand the comments made by Counselor Dupell and by our colleagues around shopping local, prioritizing local. But I don't think this is a zero-sum game here. I think that there is a lot going on and we need more, not less. I think people need more, not less. And tonight's council meeting has, has very much been about ideas and pivoting and adapting. And so this service club did that. They worked on this in terms of going to curbside and figuring out how this would work. And the city stepped up, as they have done repeatedly this year, to accommodate new ideas and new processes. So I'm going to support this. I understand about supporting local and I understand about our local businesses. There is a lot of pain in this community and it's going to be over a long period of time. But people want to have more things going on. So I will support the recommendation.
Record, recorded vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Claude McIntosh?
No.
Elaine McDonald?
In favor.
Sid Gardner?
Opposed.
Dean Hollingsworth?
Opposed.
Carolyn Nebay?
In favor.
Counselors Maurice Dupell?
Opposed.
Blaine Grant?
Oppose.
Todd Bennett?
Opposed.
Counselor Eric Bergeron? Counselor Bergeron? One more time. Counselor Bergeron? And we're going to consider him absent, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I thought maybe the, I thought maybe I heard the phone.
Did you?
Yeah. Drop off.
And Madam Mayor?
Uh, in favor.
It's been defeated, Madam Mayor.
So if we had had the vote from Counselor Bergeron?
Still defeated.
Still defeated? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
We have six against.
Thank you. Next item?
Communication report, Brookdale Avenue North Sanitary Sewer Extension with a recommendation that council receive this report and the proposed 2020 Development Charges Background Study, including the bylaw amendment for the Brookdale Avenue North Corridor, and B, that council direct administration to proceed with updating the cost recovery fee structure for the Brookdale Avenue North Sanitary Sewer Extension Project and make the 2020 Development Charges Background Study, including the revised area-specific development charge bylaw, available to the public.
Moved by Counselor Dupell and Counselor Grant. Any further discussion?
Your Worship, just a point of clarification. I got a text from Counselor Bergeron that he's on hold right now. So I don't know what that means from a tech perspective, but just to give you.
Any further discussion on the motion? This, so this was related, yes, this was related to the earlier report presentation? All in favor? We will wait to see if we can reconnect Mr. Bergeron.
We will wait to see if we can reconnect Mr. Bergeron.
Welcome to the City of Cornwall's teleconferencing bridge. Please enter your meeting number followed by the pound sign. Welcome to the City of Cornwall's... Welcome to the City of Cornwall's teleconferencing bridge.
Please enter the conference PIN number. After the tone, say your name and then press the pound key. Thank you.
Hello?
Councillor Bergeron?
Yes?
You're back. Good.
Is the vote?
Yes, we took the vote on the Rib Fest and it was defeated. And even if you had voted in favor, it would have been defeated.
I heard that.
Okay. We have dealt with item 17.1 on the agenda, Brookdale Avenue North, as a result of the re-presentation we heard earlier. And we're now on the next item, 17.2.
Social housing providers end of operating agreement mortgages. The action recommend is that council approve administration proceeding with renewing operational, operation agreements as they expire using the funding formula outlined in method number one.
Moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Gardner. So this was the second presentation we had, and this was the recommendation as to the next step. Any further discussion or debate? All in favor? Councillor Bergeron?
In favor.
Against? Carried.
Madam Mayor, we're going to go back to the economic development that was in consent portion. The recommendation is that council receive this report.
Moved by councillor Grant, seconded by councillor Gardner. Questions? Councillor Bergeron?
One question, Madam Mayor. Did you say me?
Yes, go ahead.
So one of the questions I wanted to ask, it was kind of touched on in the report on placemaking, was about the pop-up businesses. I don't see in the report the reason why we're not proceeding with pop-up businesses. I would have thought COVID would have been the perfect time to kind of implement this. So maybe if I can just get a summary of why we're not moving forward with that.
So should that be Mr. Boalow or Mr. Peters? Mr. Boalow?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It was felt, and there was some consultation with the mover of the motion regarding the pop-up parks, and that was councillor Bennett. I know that Mr. Fotherup, Jamie Fotherup, had a discussion with him about whether it would be fair to try the pop-up businesses at this time. If, for example, and in some situations, it could take some investing by the municipality if it included food or if it didn't include food. And I realize that we may not necessarily be looking at food establishments, but there may be some investment required by the municipality, so that would have to occur. And then if we went out for interest during COVID, when of course, especially in the early part, you know, the April, May, there wasn't a whole lot happening. So we were concerned that the uptake on that sort of idea would not be best this year. However, the four units are in the back of the property here, the complex. And when I say that, I mean the small C cans, the containers that are here on site. I think we are going to resurrect the idea of whether they can be used in the downtown or anywhere for that matter. They could be used for retail. Of course, there are some challenges with some of the retailers having a lack of space. So perhaps a downtown, perhaps a Lo Vilage business would want to establish, you know, in George Astley Lane, in Urquhart Lane, somewhere in the downtown, somewhere in Lo Vilage, somewhere in Lamrew Park. So I think the idea has somewhat been resurrected. I think what we'd like to do is perhaps seek that interest from the community. The other thing we would need to do is talk about cost. Normally, we would be looking at, you know, higher costs than I think what we would consider this year just because of COVID. Perhaps we would want to reduce the cost just to get activity out there. So it's like the patios, we're doing things a little bit differently with less regulation. And perhaps that would be the idea for these containers in the next month or so.
Councillor Bergeron?
Yeah, well, that's exactly what I was hoping to hear. That I knew that we already had these. And if someone is looking to or has the will to use one of these, I'd love to know that the city is open to moving quickly on these. So that was the whole reason for taking this out of consent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a few about tourism. Mr. Peters? So we know that tourism is one of those sectors that is hard-hit. And I know that we have a guide. But I'm hearing a lot from, certainly from other mayors, that there's a focus on staycationing and local tourism. So could you maybe talk about whether that's a factor here and what's being done around that?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I think the tourism staff have been re-examining what assets are in the community and how they may best be leveraged to bring more business activity into the city. From a tourism perspective, the concept of stay vacations could be considered an eastern Ontario market area, certainly outside of the Cornwall city limits itself and obviously including local residents. And I think the focus of, we've seen an increase in interest from cyclists, from people looking for outdoor adventures, even though the parks of the St. Lawrence have yet to begun operations and a number of attractions locally as well as in the region have decided not to open for this summer season. But with the opening of patios and gradual loosening of rules regarding retailers and shopping and other outdoor experiences, gatherings of more than five, now 10 people and potentially more than that, then the opportunity certainly exists. Anecdotally, on the weekend, we noticed some people in Lamrew Park that were having picnics and their license plates suggested that they had traveled from further than eastern Ontario, which is a nice thing to see. We're also seeing that some of our hotels are also seeing a little bit of an uptick in terms of, or at least a base level of accommodation purpose. So it's a mixed bag. But definitely the focus is on doing things that our current public health safety guidelines allow people to do and celebrating those businesses and merchants and restaurants that are moving forward with innovative ideas.
Yeah, I did some staycationing on the weekend outside of Cornwall, Cooper's Marsh. And it was packed. And then the Blue Anchor patio was packed. And so, and the people were not all from Cornwall. They were, they had clearly traveled from outside to Waukegan, Cooper's Marsh, and to be, to come into Cornwall. So that was interesting. What about the regional immigration pilot program? So we had talked a lot about the immigrant, Ontario immigrant nominee program. Is that on hold forever, for good?
Not forever for good, hopefully. The immigrant nominee program continues, has never stopped. However, the regional pilot was never formally launched. And so now we're looking at, in September, it'll be almost a year or towards the end of the fall anyway, it'll be a year, without it really ever gaining any legs or gaining any traction. So it's been a lost year in that respect. On the flip side of that, we continue to field a number of calls from people from outside of Canada that are looking to emigrate and have identified Cornwall partly because of the employment opportunities that are here, but also in part because of that immigrant nominee program and the unique pathway that the regional pilot had offered those people. So there's a lot of interest in people coming here for schooling, for work, to live. And not just from outside of Canada, obviously. We're talking about recent immigrants who may be, or newcomers that may have landed in other parts of Canada, notably Montreal and Ottawa and Toronto, and looking for a lower-cost community that offers perhaps a different quality of life. And so we're hopeful that that program will be restarted and some energy brought back into it. One of the key catalysts for that program was the demand for workers. And although, as one could expect, following March 17th, there was a sharp decline in new postings for employment. We didn't see the same sharp decline as other parts of Canada did. But what I can say nationally, it looks like that we're back up to about 80% of pre-March employment levels in terms of people looking for new employment, especially new skilled workers. And I think we already are ahead of that curve. We're starting to see those job postings get posted back up. And in speaking with the college, I know that they're very much interested and still have a lot of interest from foreign students in learning at St. Lawrence College. So we're optimistic for the future.
Thank you. So as I've done repeatedly tonight, I've thanked city staff, ecdev and tourism. All of the staff had to pivot quite quickly during COVID to doing other things. And Choose Cornwall became a great source of information for all things business, all things local. And we appreciate that flexibility and we thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All in favor? Against? Councillor Bergeron?
In favor.
Carried. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have one tender, tender 20T19 Water Street Retailing Wall Rehabilitation. The action recommend is that council award this tender to Louis W. Bray Construction Limited from VARS at the total bid price of $897,653.
Moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Gardner. Discussion? Any questions? Councillor McDonald?
I'm curious to know what the format is going to be of the wall. Is there going to be something artsy or...
Madam CEO?
Novel.
Who should that be directed to?
Through you, Madam CEO, I think, or Madam Mayor. I'm going to redirect it to Mr. Fotherup.
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's strictly a structural rehabilitation, so the back concrete will be knocked off and it will be regrouded and a new handrail will be put on it, but there won't be any artistic about the wall.
Well, might there be an opportunity for a placemaking venture if somebody were to make a proposal to you?
Through you, Madam Mayor, possibly. I'm not quite sure what that could be, but absolutely if somebody were to submit a proposal, we'd be happy to look at it.
I don't know what it can be either, but it's such a great location. So maybe some school will take it on.
Imaginations have been sparked. Any further questions? All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried. Against? Carried.
I have no new business motions, Madam Mayor. Passing of bylaws, that bylaws 82 to 88 inclusive listed on the agenda are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by councillor De Pell, seconded by councillor Grant. All in favor?
In favor.
Thank you. Against? Carried.
Reports from committees of council?
Council. Reports from committees of council. Councillor McDonald and councillor Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say that the fundraising for the art center is ongoing and we have now surpassed $680,000 by $543.
Thank you. Councillor Gardner?
Two things. Number one, Dr. Paul Remidiolis received a citation from the province today through Jim McDoanell for the extraordinary work done by the Eastern Ontario Health Unit and his leadership in controlling COVID-19, number one. You'll be receiving a copy of that also. Number two, I spent two hours on a webinar with Dr. David Williams, who is the Chief Medical Officer of Ontario, as chair. And we discussed the 2021 budgets, which applies to funding to cover costs of COVID-19 in 2021. We also discussed the COVID numbers. And I must say, there were three other doctors on the line with us. And if anybody wants to know what I learned or what was said in the two hours, it's not going to be done tonight. Call me tomorrow.
I'll just say this. Dr. Paul Remidiolis, il a un profil extraordinaire. And he's been absolutely the most responsive local medical officer of health that we've seen in a long time here. And we congratulate him on receiving the citation. Yeah, and I will convey that to him personally as well as saying it publicly to everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Reports from standing committees. Madam Clerk?
The pending unfinished business listing, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is that council receive the unfinished business listing for June 22nd.
Moved by councillor Bennett, seconded by councillor De Pell. All in favor? Carried.
In favor.
Thank you, councillor Bergeron.
And our confirming bylaw?
Moved by councillor Eibar, councillor Grant. All in favor?
In favor.
Carried.
Next meeting, I think, will be June 29th. I had said that we wouldn't have one before July 1st, but Madam CEO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We would like to have a special council meeting in a week from tonight, 6:00 PM, to review the city's financial statements with our external auditors. So we have that planned for a week from this evening.
Thank you. Thank you to all the staff that are here and all council. This was a long meeting, a huge agenda, because we're getting back on track pre-post COVID. And we are going to continue after this meeting to finish the in-camera portion of the meeting that we had started earlier. So I'll take a motion to adjourn and we'll take a little break and come back. Motion to adjourn, councillor Eibar, councillor Bennett. All in favor? Carried. Merci. Thank you.